Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We called the meeting in Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Good to see everyone. Thank you for coming today. As you very well know, this is our, well, you may not know, this is our second meeting of the month. First Tuesday we also meet here at six o'clock. Today five o'clock. This is called our Ben Mosley Meeting. Happy to have so many present today. Mr. Mosley, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
I don't see Mr., oh, I see you. Hello there. Hello there. At this time, I did not reach out to get outside. Assistant, Ms. Mosley, you please lead us in our prayer and our pledge of allegiance.
Joe, Joe, back, Joe.
Sir? Oh, he reminds me. Young people, sometimes when we have youth in our audience, we will allow a young person to lead the pledge of allegiance. No pressure, but if someone wants to do it, we'd be happy to have you come, stand next to this gentleman and do it.
When you say young, does that include our...
I'm looking at FPC. They don't know.
We'll help you. Come on.
There you go.
How you doing, sir?
Doing good. How you doing today?
I'm good.
Okay. I'm gonna pray in there. You're gonna do the pledge, okay? Let us pray. Gracious and kind Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and your bound for blessings. We thank you for all that you do for us on a daily basis. We ask that you would be with this body, Father God, as they transact the business of your community. We pray for each and every one, Father God, that are here on the sound of my voice. Thus we thank you for it in Christ's name, and everybody say it. Amen. All right, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Young man, give your name for the record, please, sir, and we'll put it in our picture minutes. Let me tell you the value what you've just done. I've never met you before that I know that I've met you before, but wherever I meet you again, I'll know who you are. You, the young man, have to do the pledge. That's just how important that is. Take advantage of every opportunity. You never know when it's gonna make a big difference in your life.
My name is Ezekiel, by the way.
Give your name.
Ezekiel.
Now, y'all do that. Young people, come back, come back. Ezekiel. You all used to doing that when you say your name? Our group wanna know your whole name.
Okay. Full name is Ezekiel Cantrell Hines?
That will be going in the record, sir. Thank you again. Let's give him a hand again. In the official name of teaching moment, Ezekiel, I can't just put Ezekiel because in this room, there could be what? Several what? Ezekels, so I gotta have your full name, okay? Thank you, sir. We got a lengthy agenda. Mr. Bill Powell has been moved up Commissioners. He needs to leave early. He's at the very bottom of the agenda. Everybody okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. So can we entertain him right after Mr. Long does his engineering report? The new water rates bill can move that up? Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. By consensus, we'll say it's okay. Thank you so much. Mr. Powell, you come right after our engineering report, Mr. Trent Long. All right. Now, let's try to do the expeditions. If we got some proclamations we need to do, Relay for Life, Liberty County, Dr. Karen Bell and her team are here.
Come up there quickly, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. Relay for Life is an American Cancer Society fundraiser for all cancers. And our main thing is to ensure that our survivors have another birthday. So we start a birthday card that goes wherever we go to display to remind everyone of that. Our relay is May 2nd. We hope all of y'all will come out. We also have our survivor dinner, which is at five o'clock at the Recreation Department. All cancer survivor and caregivers are invited. And we're ready for the proclamation.
Mr. Mosley, if you just read some highlights of that, sir?
Highlights, okay.
If you will, please, sir.
Okay. Whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life movement brings together four million people at Relay for Life events worldwide to show the determination and commitment to help free the world from the pain and suffering of cancer. Whereas cancer continues to touch the lives of so many, in 2025, more than 1.6 million people will be newly diagnosed with cancer in the U.S. And whereas thanks to the funds raised by Relay for Life movement, the American Cancer Society is able to invest in cancer research, provide free information and support for people facing the disease today, and educate people about how to reduce their risk for cancer or detect it early when it's the easiest to treat, contributing to a 20% decline in cancer death rate since 1991. Now, therefore, be it resolved that our Chairman Donald L. Lovett and Liberty County Board of Commissioners, due hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2025, as Paint Liberty Purple for Relay for Life. And Liberty County encourages citizens to let their passion inspire them to take the Relay for Life message to more people, to raise more dollars to fund our shared determination against cancer by participating in the Relay for Life event at Liberty County Recreation Department on May 2nd, 2025, so declared the 17th day of April, 2025.
Thank you. And we hope that y'all join us in wearing purple on that day, sir.
Thank you, sir. May 2nd. What works best, Dr. Bell, if you send us a reminder? Kodak moment?
He's counting money.
What, you want him to smile?
Yes, sir, please.
Everybody good?
Thank you, sir.
My check is already in the mail.
Yes, sir.
He's got a donation for you. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, Ms. Erica Smith from our 911 Operations Center is here. Young people, we have a 911 center. All the calls that you make that are emergency related and some non-emergency related, this is the control tower CEO for Liberty County.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Try to make this brief. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, it's a long name, second full week of April every year. It started back in 1981, and it was set aside to celebrate and thank all of those men and women who dedicate themselves to serving the public and the user agencies. It's a 24/7 job that requires a lot of sacrifice, which all of my people do make in order to assist in making a safer community, as well as making sure our public safety officials, officers, EMT, paramedics, firefighters get home safely. I've got a great group of communication officers in my building. We are short, and they are plugging along, helping, filling holes. We are hiring. I think it closes Sunday. If anybody knows of anyone, please, please, please send them my way. We love to have good people that wanna help serve. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley.
Whereas emergencies can occur anytime, they require police, fire, emergency medical services. And whereas the safety, our police officers...
Started back in 1981, and it was set aside to celebrate and thank all of those men and women who dedicate themselves to serving the public and the user agencies. It's a 24/7 job that requires a lot of sacrifice, which all of my people do make in order to assist in making a safer community, as well as making sure our public safety officials, officers, EMT, paramedics, firefighters get home safely. I've got a great group of communication officers in my building. We are short, and they are plugging along, helping, filling holes. We are hiring. I think it closes Sunday. If anybody knows of anyone, please, please, please send them my way. We love to have good people that wanna help serve. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mosley?
Whereas emergencies can occur anytime, they require police, fire, emergency medical services. And whereas the safety, our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Liberty County Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of Liberty County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatch has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, therefore be it resolved that the Liberty County Board of Commissioners declare the week of April 13th through 19th, 2025, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Liberty County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe.
If you will come to for your... Once again, this group is, when we're sleeping, they're working. Commissioners, if you'd come around again, please. Thank you, ma'am. Just wanted to stay, keep standing. Give this group a hand for what they did. National Travel and Tourism Week, Ms. Leah Poole.
We'll also be very brief, sir. Our proclamation is very long, so you don't feel like you have to read the whole thing. We are celebrating National Travel and Tourism Week, May 4th through the 10th. So we're doing the proclamation signing just a little in advance of that, so we have time to market. Encourage you to come out on May 5th, Cinco de Mayo, to rodeo, where we will be celebrating Liberty County, as well as all of the people who make it great. And then, May, the May, I said March, didn't I? May, on 8th, that Thursday, we'll be out at the farmer's market. We'll have a booth set up out there, giving out T-shirts and all kind, travel kits, all kinds of neat stuff. So lots of plans all week long, including celebrating our local hoteliers and their staff, because they're the ones who make it work. Questions? Ms. Rosie?
Whereas travel has a positive effect on Georgia and the nation's economic prosperity and image abroad, it also impacts business productivity and to individual travelers' well-being. Whereas travel too and within the United States provides significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than $11 trillion in economic output in 2024. Whereas travel is among the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting 348 million jobs in 2024, an increase of 13.6 million jobs on its 2019 record. Whereas travel spending directly generated tax revenues of $139.4 million in Liberty County, an increase of $12 million in just one year, and the tourism industry supported 1,513 jobs. Now therefore, I, Donald Lovett, Chairman of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 4th through 10th as National Travel and Tourism Week in Liberty County, Georgia, and urge the citizens of Liberty County, Georgia, to join me in this special observance with inappropriate events and commemorations.
Thank you. Young people, why they coming? Two things you ought to know as a Liberty Countyan. Part of our claim to fame, one of few counties in Georgia, not named for a man, but for the cause and our involvement in the American Revolution, as well as two signs of the Declaration of Independence were from Liberty County, Georgia. You ought to know those two things if you are Liberty County native or if you have become a resident.
Somebody's at the door. I don't know what she said. Sorry.
Good?
Thank you.
Give them a hand. Thank you. Out of number five on our gender recognitions, we have with us some, several years ago, when we had two basketball state champions, we were called the community or the county of champions. I forgot what the terminology was, but we have with us some champions today who have come to be recognized. The first Presbyterian men's basketball team is here. They're the state champions, so we're gonna invite them to come up. A coach, and I didn't want to put you on the spot, but who's gonna introduce? Who's gonna? All right.
I'd be more than happy to introduce.
You should be.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna start with the one you already know, Mr. Ezekiel Hines, who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Grady Ringer, Malika Furlough, Elijah Bartley, Jaden Thomas, Brandon Benton, Jackson McCullough, Jordan Ortiz, and we have Coach Castillo with us. We're missing a couple players. They have baseball Logan Brown and Jayce Reed, and also Coach David Linderman, who is not with us. He's helping the baseball team out today.
Mr. Ezekiel, tell us about your journey to the championship.
It's been a little tough, because it's been a lot of doubt for me personally, just trying to see where I could fit in and improve for this team. A lot of times where I'll get frustrated at myself for not putting in the work, and then I just had them picking up the slack for me. I appreciate them for that. There were a couple games where I felt like I was needed, and I came through, and there were some where I didn't. But through it all, I wouldn't have any other team go to the state championship with me.
Good job, sir. Good job, sir. I'm trying to say, Commissioner, if we wanna stay up, or we going down as we did with the girls? Let's go down?
If I call your name, come pick your certificate, and then shake hands with these Commissioners. Let me just get on this side then. And this is the second state championship for Coach. Jayce, the name Reed. Grady Ringer. Logan Brown. Jackson McCullough. Jordan Ortiz. Malika Furlough. Brandon Benton. Jaden Thomas. Elijah Bartlett. Assistant Coach David Linderman. Assistant Coach Martin. Martin Allen. And Reginald Cashfield.
Thanks, sir.
They and I have history with each other. We have a good day.
I got history a lot.
He didn't do the pledge, but he's married all the time. State Player of the Year, right here from Iron Hill, Georgia.
And who had the State Player of the Year among us? He'll be in the Hall of Fame, won't he? All righty. Final answer, Mr. Richards.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Yes, sir. Here to present the county's February 2025 financial statements. Starting with the general fund, this month is kinda where things turn around cash flow-wise, which is a good thing. We have collected, started collecting a lot more of our property tax revenue. Our total collected general fund revenues through the month of February is 61% of our expected budgeted. We have spent approximately 63% of our total budgeted expenditures. We currently have four months of operating expenses in our unreserved fund balance. This is up slightly from a year ago, where we reported 3.4 months. Looking over at the departmental expenditures, there are a few of them that are showing ahead of schedule. Some are due to the timing of contract renewals and vendor payments that have to be paid at the beginning of the fiscal year. This shows some departments, it skews their budget for the remainder of the year, but on an annual basis, excuse me, these will level out. This is the case, again, this month for IT, General Administration, which is our regional commission dues, Superior Court, and the Bureau of Police Standards. A couple of the departments are still showing budget overages for the overtime that their employees worked during Hurricane Helene. Elections, just based on the timing of the elections, how they fall in the fiscal year. Risk management, this is where, this is department where we pay our annual pension contribution. It's a lump sum payment one time a year, so we don't expect any other charges to this department for the remainder of the year. The Sheriff's Department is currently showing ahead of schedule for contract labor and electricity. And the jail is showing ahead of schedule for their increased costs for food for inmates. Turning the page to solid waste. With the collections, with the continued collections of that solid waste assessment, now we're moving further into the fiscal year. Their net loss has come down from, I think we reported 700 and something thousand last month. It's now sitting at 349,000. We've collected 57.5 of our total budgeted revenues and have spent approximately 65% of our total budgeted expenditures. There's one department currently, 4520, that is showing over budget due to some vehicle repairs and site repairs. Turning the page to our special revenue funds. The District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Program is showing just a little bit over scheduled due to some vehicle repairs earlier in the fiscal year. But all of the remaining funds are currently operating within their budget and meet our expectations at this point. Now on to the sales tax reports. Sales tax seven, we received for the month of February, $1,058,000. Since this SPOS began, we have received $24.9 million in proceeds and have spent about half that, $14.7 million, on our SPOS projects. For T-SPOS for February, we received just shy of $973,000. To date, we have collected $51 million and have spent $23.8 on our T-SPOS projects. And this concludes my February report. Unless you have any questions?
Ms. Samantha, the, back to the solid waste.
Yes.
So the subsequent collections should correct that. I just want to ensure that it's not, that people are cherry picking when they come over to the Tax Commissioners' Office. I heard that, and I forgot who mentioned that to me, that there are some cases where we may need to address that issue, so is it...
Yes, sir. There are a number of people who come in and pay their tax bill, but just a tax piece and do not pay the assessments. So we are definitely gonna ramp up the, trying to go after and collect that fee within this next fiscal year, for sure. But yes, sir.
Thank you.
Honestly, I think it's a shared responsibility within the county. It doesn't really fall into any single department, but I think a combination of the Tax Commissioners' Office, because they have the records of, you know, who and who has not paid. Sir?
How much is in arrears?
It's a couple hundred thousand for this most recent tax year.
And Mr. Chair, we discussed in the planning session to do as y'all had done in the past, hire someone on a part-time basis to help in that collection.
Would that involve Chief Magistrate Officer?
If it's determined that we can locate those people and validate that, and it's financially worth it, then absolutely, yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Samantha. On EMS side, what is the top of your head? What does the revenue look like now?
We project for ambulance fees about $2.2 million a year. And I think last time I checked, we were about 1.7, 1.8. There are a lot of write-offs just by the nature of the revenue, and, but we do have a third-party billing company that helps us collect that and remit as much as possible and go after the insurance companies and that kinda thing.
That's including the new procedure that EMS have now? When they respond to someone's house and they refuse, there's still a bill?
The do-not-transport or something like that, yes, sir. I know that some additional revenue has come in, but it's not been a huge amount, not yet. But yes, sir, that is definitely billed now.
Mr. Mosley and Chairman Lovett, I think we need to let the public know what's happening, how that works now. So that they won't get a shock treatment later of a bill of what? About $400, $500, somewhere along there, if they refuse.
Historically, if I'm mistaken, correct me. A lot of what EMS does is going to be, have to be written off. You collect as much as you can, that's why the third party is involved to do that. Liberty County still has an issue with injured care. Not unlike other communities. But the method you mentioned of collecting fees for those who have been turned down, denied access, that's a way to recoup some funds for what they do. But if I recall correctly, when we transferred that service over from the county to, excuse me, from hospital to the county, that problem was there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir. I think the, and I think it will be an ongoing...
I think the, and I think it will be an ongoing, I mean, like you said, we're only going to be able to collect a certain amount.
And that's, I mean, statewide, nationwide.
Yes. That's what I was trying to say.
But I think that, that new fee that was implemented, part of it was to?
Help offset some of that.
Well, yes, sir, but also to avoid those frivolous calls, but the calls that really aren't emergencies and are tying up the ambulances and that kind of thing, so.
Mr. Chair, I don't have all the information on it, but since you mentioned that, there is a program that if someone calls for a truck and they are triaged by nine-one-one, depends upon the nature of the call, they can actually call for an Uber. An Uber will take them to the hospital, because they just say they just stumped their toe. Believe it or not, they call nine-one-one for that. They will take them to the hospital and that Uber charge will be put on their hospital bill. Allow me to receive some more information on that.
Interesting.
And so that would not tie up a unit.
Gotcha. Alright.
If there are no other questions, Finance has another item on the agenda, on the agenda tonight. It's related to the new state legislation, Heinzville five eighty-one and the new Heinzville ninety-two regarding property taxes, digest, valuation, and the overall milage process. But starting on the twenty twenty-five tax assessment notices that will be billed out hopefully in a month or so, the state is asking that all of the taxing entities certify their current estimated rollback milage rate to be included on the assessment notices this year. But as you all are aware, we haven't received a final digest yet from the assessor's office. And so it is management's recommendation just to include the previous year's twenty twenty-four's milage rate as our estimate, because we don't have any better information at this time. But I have included a copy of the certification for your review, but we will need this to, to go to a vote to make it official for the state.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to go.
Is there a reason why we haven't received it?
I mean, I think by this time of year, we never receive the digest, yes, sir. And the state's accelerated timeline is, I'm not sure how any of the other counties in Georgia are, are.
I think very few of them will be.
Sure.
And part of it, Mr. Chair, that they haven't heard appeals, they got to hear all the appeals.
Right. And that's thirty-nine days, that's, that's at least a thirty-day period, yeah.
I think it's sixty.
Sixty days, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Thorne?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to confirm that the city of Heinzville, they have to give us that approval for theirs, or that was theirs for this year, their estimated?
They also have to certify theirs.
Okay, and it goes, it goes with, in with ours, so we're approving it, but they've already approved?
Oh, this, that city of Heinzville that's listed on ours is the county portion of the tax for Heinzville residents. So Heinzville will have their separate milage.
Either they have voted or they are voting, I heard the mayor talk about it.
Oh, yes, yes, sir, heard that, yes, sir, no.
Okay, but this is what we got to do in order to be, meet state guidelines, comply, that's the word, comply. And knowing that this is not the final, but we have to, the state House bill, everyone says you have to send an estimated rollback on the assessment notices, so we're just following what comes down from Atlanta.
Yes, sir, but the difference is, well, that's a main difference, but the other difference in the assessment notices this year is it's not going to provide that estimated tax, which was very misleading. So this, it's kind of a trade-off, you know, we have to do this, but we don't have to do that.
Alright, but it needs, it does need to be approved to?
Yes, sir.
Allow the assessment notices to go out.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the milage rate certification for twenty twenty-five estimated rollback.
Motion second, we approve the twenty twenty-five estimated rollback milage rates as presented by staff. I think we had a full discussion, unless there's some other discussion. All in favor, show your hands, please. Close, alrighty, we'll need to sign that tonight for you, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, if y'all will circulate it, we'll, we'll sign it, okay.
And if I may, one last thing that Finance has that I would like to, to bring up is there was a CIP request that came in, I know it's been on there a couple of years, for animal control, for some perimeter fencing to secure the animals and, and actually secure the staff down there. And I believe we have identified some potential funding sources to go ahead and get that completed in our current fiscal year. But this time I would like to ask Chief Hagan to join me to speak a little bit more about that, if I may.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner.
Hello, sir. Hello, sir.
What she's referring to, Sheriff Bowman went out there because Mr. Marrero and his staff helps us with our cadens far as medication and that type of thing, and found that the animal shelter was in, in a bad way. We had a gate, but no fencing. We had someone go out, actually tie a dog to the gate and leave it. So we felt there needed to be fencing for safety purposes, because if someone broke in there, there's no camera, no proper lighting. And so the sheriff asked me to get with Mr. Commissioner Frazier and see if we could combine some resources, and the sheriff has agreed to pay for half of the fencing. And I'll let the chairman, not chairman, but Commissioner Frazier speak for himself far as the money he would be willing to allocate, but this is to get the fencing put up at, and we will take that from our current year budget. We will, you know, pick from different departments to do so to make sure that fencing is put out there and hopefully we can get some lighting and some cameras there, at least one or two cameras. So if someone does that again, we can at least have idea who did it, because that's inhumane to any animal.
Before, well, I'll let you speak, I was going to say, what's the number, but I'll hear the number shortly, I'm assuming. How much is?
I think it was, what, twenty-four?
Yes, sir.
There we go.
Twenty-four thousand? Okay, alright, and you, and you guys are going to halves, that's what you said?
That's correct.
I'm trying to feel the deal.
Yes, yes, yes.
Just for the public information, do you want to move on? I remember him saying that not only are we trying to keep the animals in, trying to keep the public out.
That's for sure, that's for sure.
Trying to keep the public out, he would make a deal with that, but it's just, it is what it is.
But that was the sheriff's way of just trying to help secure different venues that, and I know Mr. Marrero is short budget-wise, and so we're able to try and find the money to offset that for him. And I appreciate you, Mr. Frazier, for stepping in and helping.
Questions, Commissioner, before we take action on this? I'll let you make the motion, sir, as you, contributing partner.
Alright, what should I make the motion for? Just for the allocation of funds for the fencing for?
From your SPOS six funds, yes, sir.
That's the motion.
And then the sheriff's house will be paid from budget savings.
Alright, that's the motion, there's a second.
Second.
Motion is second.
I got a question about it, I understand what they're talking about, but using sales tax dollars, do we have to go out for a bid on that?
I think it's less than a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's based on the amount.
Less than a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's based on amount, yeah.
Less than what?
Less than one hundred.
Yeah.
Less than a hundred?
You saying anything less than a hundred, you don't have to, but I know, I know it's based on the amount, I don't remember specifically, but I know it's amount directed, yeah.
I think that's right.
I think that's right, okay, alright, okay.
I learned that in class.
All in favor, show your hand, please.
Long as it's legal.
Alright, motion passed, alright, thank you, Chief, for y'all participating in that, thank you, Commissioner Frazier. Alright, engineer, Mr. Long.
Good evening. I've got a couple of projects out for bid right now, Sunshine Lake Road and Bakentown Road. So those will be open in the first part of May, so we should have some prices on those and be able to bring those back to you, hopefully somewhere close to the mid-month meeting. The Island's Highway Box Culvert is functioning now, we took out the bypass piping and they're supposed to put down asphalt tomorrow. So we'll have somebody out there inspecting, making sure all the asphalt's out there and it goes down like it should. Well, Cemetery Road, they're got most of stormwater in and they'll be grading and getting that road finished up and going. The roadway striping package, the guy has finished. We still have about a hundred thousand dollars that we need to spend striping-wise, so I've got some roads to put out in another package. But if you guys have any other roads that you want me to include in the striping package, please let me know, because I, I need to put that out probably sometime in May. So I, I need to know those soon, because I really would like to spend that money before the end of the year. That way, when next year's L-MIG rolls around, I can count that as being done.
Not a problem.
So, the water system, Western Railroad is actively under construction and so is Jones Creek Pavilion. Now, I've skipped over a couple others I'm going to come back to in just a second, I hadn't forgotten about yours.
Please do.
Alright, so we got a couple of projects that are heavy hitters, like Live Oak Drive and Bakentown Road is going to be a heavy hitter. We actually have our plans pretty much ready for Bacon, for Live Oak Drive. We have several issues where I have conflicts with the water line and I've got the city going out there physically finding those water lines to make sure that we're not going to have a problem, and if I need to redesign something, I'll redesign it before I put the package out. So if that should occur within the next two weeks, so then I'll be putting that out for bid. Hopefully the first week in May is when I want to have that out.
Is there any way possible we could get together?
I'd love to.
Right.
I'd love to.
So I can take a look at it.
You just let me know your schedule and I'll be glad to accommodate and make it work.
Great, thank you. Well, just email it to me. I'm confident enough to read it.
So I intended to present some stuff to you today on behalf of Moon, not Marina, but Pier area. But my sub-consultant lost a family member this past weekend, so I'd like to put it off till the next meeting, if I could, please. One last thing that's not on here that I wanted to kind of bring to your attention, we talked about a little bit last month, was with the LRA extra funds, the state of Georgia's putting out for transportation, we'll get another five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. One of my recommendations to you, last time we talked about it, was that we apply those funds toward our current L-MIG list, which has Bakentown Road on it, it has Live Oak Drive on it, Baker Beals, it has several roads we got on here that are under construction, and on our L-MIG list, even taking back out a little bit what we had in there for Freeman Grove Road, we've got about five point three million dollars worth of construction. And we've got about half a million dollars of L-MIG money already allocated to it. What I'm suggesting to you is do a similar split with this five hundred and fifty and apply it to these L-MIG projects. That way we can make your money stretch a little bit further on each one of them and each one of you can stretch out your L-MIG money or your sales tax money in different places. I'm willing to do whatever you guys want, that is a suggestion from me. But what I'd really like to be able to do is for you guys to vote on that at the regular meeting in May so that I can make application during May.
Someone, please remind me, L-MIG, what did?
Local maintenance incentive grant.
Yeah, but what did we designate those funds, which?
Alright, I'll tell you, so we have Bakentown Road, Baker Beals Lane, we got some County Line Road on there, we've got Freeman Grove Road, we've got Live Oak Drive, we've got McIntosh Lake Road, and we got Sunshine Lake Road. And we got Villages Limerick. Now Villages Limerick is about done, so we probably won't allocate any more money to it.
So we have five hundred thousand in L-MIG and the LR, we'll let the academic.
LRA, yes, sir.
Five hundred thousand in that.
Yes, sir, now if you divide that six ways, from six commissioners, it's ninety-one thousand dollars apiece that we can put to each one of them. So whichever guys you want to do.
And what? What do we, what do we expect to do with the ninety-one? Is there a way to, Commissioner, to leverage that with your T-SPOS? I guess it's according to what all you would like to do, he says Live Oak, it's your area. Yeah, even when you mentioned them finding the water lines, yeah.
That's a heavy, that, Live Oak Drive is going to be the heaviest lift of everything we got out there. And right behind it is Bakentown Road.
So the thought then that we just divvied, as Commissioner Walter said, the ninety, whatever thousand of them among the districts?
Or you, you could combine it into one. Put it toward one.
I'm trying to get some feedback, I'm trying to conjure up some feedback from the commissioners. Or you just feel more comfortable just having to divvied up than?
Well, I, I've got Baker Beals, which is a dirt road. I don't, it ain't a paved road, these other roads are paved, correct? And that's what I want to try to do is, I mean, what I'm trying to eliminate, which it makes no difference to some people, but we've got a motor driver driving from Midway all the way to Flemington to grade about three or four roads, and all we got to do is fix the road and all we, we don't have to do nothing but every once in a while put stripes down. I don't know what the bid will be, I have no idea, but I've got sales tax money in there that'll, that'll probably help. But I'm not going to give up ninety-one thousand dollars. I mean, even a couple of projects that we're working on right now with Commissioner Gillard is, is going to take some money, I mean.
Alright, what's the, what's the timeline on that decision, sir?
I need to have applied by the end of May.
End of May, okay.
I think I got to like the first week in June or something like that, I don't remember the exact day, but I kind of set myself for early May so that I didn't, I don't want to be cutting it close.
You have got a dollar figure kind of on Baker's Beals, don't you?
About four hundred thousand.
Wow, how long is that road?
And we, we didn't even talk about Tyson Road, because I know they got to put the water down it first.
Yes, sir, no, we don't have Tyson Road in there yet, but.
It's not very long, I don't know. It's about, how long is Baker Beals, I know it's not very long.
About the same distance as Tyson.
It's not very long, it's a pretty short road.
Only thing about it is there's right away going to be issues on the.
Yeah, it's point one-three miles. I was trying to convert it back to feet for you, so that's going to be about eight hundred feet.
We might get a little.
Well, the simplest thing would be just to deviate up, but I, you know, I'm not trying to make that decision for the, for the commissioners, so. But that's the simplest thing to do, then, then you can lever that with your T-SPOS, T-SPOS fund, excuse me, and, and, and do more in your district, so.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with them two splitting it up, they got the two major projects, especially.
Yeah, because Live Oak, Live Oak's going to hit, hit just shy two million, and he's going to hit about one point three with Bakentown Road.
A million dollars, basically.
So ninety-one divided by them two, I don't have a problem with that.
Bakentown is going to be about the same as Bill Carter.
Bill Carter, yeah, Bill Carter and Bakentown could be about the same.
Commissioner Thorne, tell me again?
We're doing, we're doing basically the same thing.
I don't have a problem.
With?
Splitting between Live Oak Road and Beals.
Baker Beals.
Baker Beals. You fine with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
You got it, sir?
So you're going to just divert your, your portion between these two? I'm, I'm getting a little bit more confused, so I'm sorry.
My, my preference would just take the ninety-one thousand, divide it between them two.
Yes, ma'am, I got you, I understand.
Not just my portion, I don't know if they want to speak for their portion. Commissioner Stevens said he didn't, he was in favor of what I just said.
And I'm just going to be quiet.
We're going to try and give you some money, that's a bad-looking road out there.
Okay, alright.
You good?
Chairman Lovett.
In the meantime, you try to find some more money and maybe we can get some more.
And then hopefully. I need to go out and trim the tree.
There's more roads that got to be paved also.
Okay, so what I'll do is, I'll send out what I think we were talking about tonight and what I think is going where, and then that way you can take vote on it at the next meeting, if that works. And just let me know if I'm wrong.
Okay.
As soon as the paint and the asphalt dry on Live Oak, the city coming for us.
I know, that's why Commissioner Newey is kind of quiet down there.
Alright, but, but just so, Commissioner Blunt, your points were taken, we got, you know, and these, they're collaborating, which is good, and you've done that too, so they're collaborating on trying to get something done using a lot of the dollars that we have at our disposal. But, but I, but I, but I remind you, please use your T-Sploths funds to the fullest to get projects done.
Right.
Yes, sir.
We need to develop that report card. Alright, thank you, sir.
Hope, hope, hope.
He's got nine more questions.
I got nine more questions, please. Chairman Lovett and Mr. Mosley and Trent, but we need to hurry. Sit down, meeting on the discussion of pulling that money from, um, the Interstate Paper Road, D-estimate, whatever it is now, which is about one point six million. That's what I was, I was, uh, 'cause I've got some roads that needs that money real bad.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I think we've kinda had that discussion for years now. We've, we've, it's just my opinion, we've, I think we're exercised all communication. I think we're exercised all type of negotiations and everything in between. I'm, I'm at the point where we, we could use that money somewhere else.
I agree with you, we could split that money up.
I, I will have to respond because I've been privy to conversation, there's been some recent discussion. There's been some recent discussion, nothing finalized, recent discussion, uh, with who, who's the new company that's taking over?
International.
International.
And, and what I've been told is they want some time to get the, get the done, deal done, you know? And, but they're willing to talk about sharing in that.
Could I be included in those conversations?
Well, I, I, it was told to me, yeah.
I would still suggest put a timeline on it.
Well, and that's not a bad idea. It's not a bad idea. And, and we'll have to readdress anyway because we're getting ready to redo the T-Sploths, so, yeah. It'll have to be readdressed anyway.
We've got two more roads waiting.
So, so that will, that will actually put a timeline on it, okay?
That's fair.
Trent, you, have you got any update on the, on the river crossing and all in Waldauville with the, the freight?
Yes, sir. So that was awarded to Reeves Construction.
Right.
It was like thirty-seven million dollars or something like that, it's pretty heavy. They have issued notice to proceed, they have been doing a lot of the construction clearing, um, getting set, things set up. Um, I know that their, uh, lead surveyor came by my office two weeks ago, had a conversation about where things were. So, um, as far as, you know, the timing of, uh, how the construction's gonna go, I don't have a construction schedule from them. But I, I believe they have like two years is in their contract or something like that, cause it's pretty long. And, and the other thing that you gotta realize is that bridge that they're building through the swamp is like fifteen hundred feet long, so it's a.
To cross the railroad?
Yes, sir. Cause it's also a bridge across the wetlands too, so.
Let be our longest bridge?
It's a long bridge.
Will, will it be Liberty County's longest?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I think the furthest one we got now is Jones Creek that's ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the longest one that we have, that we have made. All the others are shorter. There's, there's a, less than a handful of bridges we have to worry about.
Yeah, okay. Two years.
Two years. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir, alright. Alright, Mr. Powell, new water rates, I said just what we made in our agenda to allow this gentleman to.
Lieutenant Chairman, Commissioners, this is my, my first time here.
Welcome.
I've been with Georgia Rural Water now about twenty-three years, and I've been doing this for about forty years. Back when Trent was just a boy. I don't know what detail, look at there, they've already got it up on the screen, look at there.
You're in Liberty County, my friend.
I didn't know how much detail y'all wanted, so I walked over there and I gave you my flash drive, and I says, how about putting this up if we can do that? That shows the operating budget. And it shows a thirty thousand dollar reserve. With bringing your total to a hundred, about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in your operating budget for water. Now, let me back up and, uh, okay, now, let's go to sheet two. Alright, you see that down at the bottom, forty-two thousand, four thirty-four, four thirty-two? That is the amount of debt service y'all have on your water system. And that is, and your customers have gotta pay that back. So you go, we gotta add, we have that bet to the bill. Let's go to worksheet D. Jump over to D, or the, or the, or the fourth, fourth sheet, right there. Alright. You've got a total operating budget including debt of a hundred and ninety-one thousand, move up a little bit with your cursor. Go up a little bit more, right, going up, right there. Alright, you see operating budget of a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars? So what we, how we gonna do, we gotta generate that revenue from your customers, from your water customers. So right now, go to your next page, go down a little bit further. Alright, how we do that, it's real simple. You bill out about a million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons a month. You've got two hundred and seventy-seven customers, and you've got thirteen equivalent residential customers. That's your, that's a larger, I'm not sure exactly what customers those are, but you've got, it'd be like a commercial, commercial customer, like a restaurant or school or something like that. But there's thirteen additional equivalent customers. So what that means is a customer may have the impact of two households, two homes. So y'all've got a base charge of forty-four dollars for any individual home. So if you've got an impact of two homes, your base charge is eighty-eight dollars, you just multiply two times forty-four. Okay, so that's how, but the, the normal usage, the average usage per ERU or equivalent residential connection is about thirty-six, from thirty-six to four thousand gallons, y'all are at thirty-eight eighty-two. So my calculation purposes, you'll see on the bottom there, I use thirty-five hundred gallons as my calc, as my figure to calculate from. Alright, go down to, right there, on that page right there. So what we've done, we set a base charge up into debt service charge, debt service is real easy. You take your forty-two thousand dollars divided by a number of customers, it comes out to twelve dollars and nineteen, nineteen cents per ERU or equivalent customer. We've got a base charge of thirty-one eighty-one, those two total forty-four dollars. Then we have a two dollar admin charge. That two dollar admin charge is per account. You may have a customer that has two or three ERUs, they only have one meter. They get two dollars, grandma gets charged two dollars to make it fair to everybody. What we're trying to do here is to make it fair to all your customers. We don't want a small user to be subsidizing your large users. One thing about it, y'all don't have that many large users in Liberty County on y'all's water system, very small. But one thing y'all've got to do, you've got to implement a water conservation oriented rate structure. That is a mandatory on the Water Stewardship Act of two thousand and ten by Governor Perdue. And that means, all it means is that the more water you use, the more you, more it costs per thousand. So what we've done, we've established y'all's current rates, y'all giving away two thousand gallons with your base charge. So in other words, if grandma, she's living out there on that water system, and, and she goes down to Midway and visits her son and stays down there two months, you're charging her two thousand gallons a month that she's not gonna be using. She's paying for something she's not getting. So we're gonna eliminate that. We're gonna start off with a base charge, and that base charge is gonna be for zero gallons. And that means that it's an availability charge. The, the privilege of having water to your property is gonna cost you forty-four dollars a month to have it available to you. Then for every thousand gallons, for every gallon you use, you're charged per thousand gallons. The first level is two dollars and fifty cent, that's from one gallon up to two thousand gallons. Then after you go over two thousand gallons, the next three thousand gallons is gonna be at three dollars a thousand. Then the next five thousand gallons is gonna be at three fifty, the next ten thousand gallons is gonna be four dollars, the next thirty thousand gallons is gonna be at four fifty, and anything over a fifty thousand gallons is gonna be five dollars. That's your schedule right over there. So an average customer using thirty-eight, I mean as you were, thirty-five hundred gallons, their, their water bill will be fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. So, let's go to your very final page, page number, sheet number five, right there. That shows your current rates right now, your current bill for zero gallons is thirty-three fifty. It'll go to forty-six dollars, which is twelve dollars and fifty cent increase. I don't know how many years it's been since y'all've had an increase in water. Joseph, y'all can use.
Never.
Never.
I thought, I thought it was gonna be a lead in line, actually. That we, today we have not had an increase of all these years, how many years, approximately?
Thirteen.
About twelve years.
About twelve years. You, you missed your lead in line.
All I can say is y'all are doing pretty good as your rates are not any more than they are, okay? I have had cities that I've worked with, they're, your percent, the average percent is gonna be about fifty, about fifty-five percent increase, okay? But the dollar amount is about like nineteen dollars, but the dollar amount is a whole lot better to, to sound than the fit, than the percentage. But I've had cities that have had up to a hundred and forty percent increase on the average customer. Hundred and forty percent. And I had one lady over in this, this city on the west side of Georgia came up, she said, I'd like to address the board. And I had no earthly idea what that lady was gonna say, I swear I didn't, I didn't know what in the world. She came up there and she says, well, it looks like to me the chickens have come home to roost. So if y'all have never had an increase, I guess you can say the chickens have come home to roost now. But what we wanna do is, once we get this in place, I'm hoping to be back next year, I'm hoping I'm, I'm gonna be around next year. And I'd like to come back and do another study for you after you implement these, the new rates, the new methodology, and make sure that we're generating the revenue. And one thing about it, Samantha says, you have in the past moved money from the general fund to the water fund to subsidize that. And now that, what now, the now, what I've got calc, what I've got calculated here is the water is gonna be sustainable on itself, I mean, it's self-sustainable now. So in other words, but there is a way to move money from one fund to the other, I was just explaining that to her. And that, that, your, your, your attorneys and your auditors will, will, will agree with it. When we get to that point, if it need, if it needs to, she's gonna call me and I'll come back. Now, one thing too, I offer at Georgia Rural Water, this service that I'm providing to y'all is at no cost to y'all. Y'all are members of Georgia Rural Water, and, uh, so I, I mean, and I work with engineers all the time, I work with Trent all the time in other, in other cities and things like that. And I worked a lot of other engineers, I worked with Carter and Sloop, Tim Ingram and Associates, Chad Griffin with Stillwater Engineering. I worked with a lot of engineers all across, across the state. And I do these, I submit these rate analysis to the engineers so they can submit them into the, to JIFA, USDA for the, for the, for the loans, and which has to have a great rate analysis with that. And my, my rate analysis are, are recognized through, through JIFA and through the USDA. Cause I've, I've done this for, like I say, about forty years now, about twenty-five with Georgia Rural Water. So I've got, I've got a little bit of background, and, uh, and I've done quite a few studies in the state of Georgia. I just came back from City of Lula this week, and I've been on the phone with Funston, Georgia this week, and also City of Midway, and I'm also, I've done the studies in Riceboro.
Waycross.
Waycross.
You were there last Friday.
I was there. That's right, I was there last, last Friday.
Did the same thing.
See, I can let you do this. I mean, why didn't you say something, I could've turned it right over to you.
Let's maximize our, our time, excuse me, this.
Sounded about the same, didn't it? Pretty close. So anyway, the main thing is we're gonna do away with the two thousand gallons minimum, go to zero consumption, and we're gonna, we're gonna implement the ERUs. And what's gonna, another thing that I'll do is, does, when you get ready to imp, when y'all decide on what y'all wanna do, if you implement the rates, let me know and I'll come back and work with the, with the staff, and we'll do some, implement the rate structure like we have, and, uh, make sure we run a trial bill and make sure everything's calculated correctly. City of Funston didn't do that, and I've been on the phone all day with them today. They've over, they've overcharged the cotton gin there and whatever, so we gotta make a lot of, the old saying, the old farmers say we gotta re-lick the calf on that one, so, and so, us older folks, we know what that term means, by re-licking the calf. So, so anyway, we don't want, we, we don't want that to happen here, so, cause when we get, you get to that point, Samantha.
Alright, let me hear from staff, your recommendation.
Yes, sir, we recommend it because again, we want to make sure each fund stands on its own. And, um, it was a resolution, Mr. Chair, with those rates that Bill had recommended in your packet.
It's in that packet, okay. I know we talked about this at the commissioner's planning, alright. And our thought process was to make this effective, remind me somebody when?
We, we want to do it July first, Mr. Chair.
July first.
One reason we brought up is to give, to give the notice out, to give the customers ample time to make preparation for, uh.
And let me help, try to make it simple, help me out, customers, ten plus years, no raise in, in your rates. Also, this is an enterprise fund which should pay for itself.
Pay for itself, yes.
We have been subsidizing this fund out of the general fund, which is really not.
Not due.
We're gonna correct that, we're gonna correct that, we're gonna correct that, this is the way to correct it, alright. So, so the commission's not just out trying to take advantage of anyone, we're just trying to, um, make this a fair process as well as ensure that the customers who are getting the, the resource are also paying for the resource, so.
I don't know, uh, we're just talking about the expansion of the water line, but we, uh, we've got a, you know, a well and everything that's been put in, and my thought is, where are we gonna be at for any maintenance? I mean, how long is, who, who's gonna be paying for that? Will that be paid out of the enterprise fund or will that be paid out of the general fund?
Have to be self, self-supporting.
That's what I'm saying, but if it gets to be, I mean, you know, we're gonna have to pay for it out of the general fund if we get to where we're, we're in the counties.
I hope that we will keep a closer eye on this, and that we will, we're not going back to. Yeah, we're going back to. So, so we should review our rates every, what do you recommend, how often, every?
Let's look at your rates every year, but you might wanna, I don't expect any major changes next year or maybe two years. Let's look at your rates, I mean, it won't take, it'll take a short time for me to run some numbers. And with Samantha, the budget numbers and things like that. But make sure that you got, when you do the general trend, general ledger transfers to, from the, you pay all your bills out of the general fund, but you then you, you put the general, you put the.
Money back.
Ledger number, ledgers back, put it to water, you pay it, pay it, charge it back to the water. But make sure that that water budget is kept up, and you are showing all your expenses out of that, out of your water fund. I don't know, I'm sure like, one of the main things is an overhead storage tank maintenance contract. You know, that's one of the things that some cities just neglect, and all of a sudden it all gonna bottom, falls out of the overhead storage tank.
Well, that's, that's what usually happens, when you turn the spigot on, you've got water, and when you shut it off, it's off and you don't think any about it.
No, you don't think about it.
So I'm just asking lifetime of our pump, uh, and we do have a generator down there, correct? Or do you know?
I don't know, I don't know.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
No problem.
Okay, so those, those are things that I'm looking at down the road that, I mean, everything's going up, cause we just went up on water. So that's what I'm just trying to make sure, is our enterprise funds, Samantha, gonna be enough to be sufficient for this?
Yeah, fully, fully, what's the word, sufficient, fully?
Sustainable.
Yeah.
Right now, I've got a thirty thousand dollars a year reserve put in there, put in your budget. They're fun, you're funding that reserve, but you're not funding depreciation. I don't know, the only other system that I know that funds depreciation is when I stopped at this past, this Tuesday, was up in Nicholson, Georgia. They actually fund depreciation, so they don't need to go to USD or to USDA or JIFA to borrow money. They've got, when, when it gets twenty years and that, and you got a life of that pump you're talking about, with twenty years, they're gonna replace. with 20 years, they're going to replace that pump because they've already depreciated it for 20 years. And they've got the money set aside. But most utilities that I know of, y'all are not funding depreciation. You're only funding a portion of that in that $30,000 reserve.
And just the, the maintenance on the tank will cost you $30,000.
Oh, yeah, a year.
So, I, I just, I mean, we are providing clean drinking water. Sure, that's something we all wanted to do, but I just want to make sure that this is something that's going to happen within the next four years.
Yeah, let's just make sure, staff, that we factor in any maintenance. Now, Mr.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going, I want to ask you a question right quick, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I want to know if anybody out here in this audience has ever called Commissioner Lovett up there and said, "Thank you for the water that you're providing me." Hey, how many phone calls have you got?
None.
But the first time that you turn on that faucet and that water doesn't come out, you're going to holler at them.
My phone rings too.
It's out of sight, out of mind. Water is the, is the most critical utility you have. You can live without electricity. You can live without gas. You can live without cable. How many of yous got those, what they call them, cell phones? Does everybody have a cellphone? I guarantee you, you're paying more for that cellphone than you are for your water. You'll look at, your water is your cheapest utility and it's the most important utility you've got. You can live without electricity. You can, you can learn to live without a cellphone.
Bill, we thank, we thank you for the help. We're trying to, trying to maximize our time, but.
I know it. I know it. When I get started, Chairman, I get, I hear.
I need, I need the video you let, put, put the video up.
But I want to just say, I'm going to leave y'all with one more, one thought about, brought up by here by Mr. Walton out here.
I, I hear you. Woodrow Sapp, they maintain our system. So, are we paying them out of the general fund or?
Out of water.
It'll be coming out of.
Okay, all right, all right. This is what Commissioner Walton was asking, you know, are the maintenance fees attached to the water system?
Well, the Woodrow Sapp is big, okay? So, that's what I'm trying to say. There's, through time and time again, we've talked about this tonight. And I don't know that we've talked about it in the last four years, other than what the rates are and what is coming in.
Yeah, we had.
I'm glad we talked about it and, you know, I'm sorry we took a little bit too much time to the audience. Just like you said, just.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we, to do this, to get the word out, so we can start this in July. July. Chair, entertain the motion.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. You might want to stay just for, you going to be in the room?
Mr. Chair, I'm.
I make a motion that we accept the increase from the water study.
I'll say.
Motion second, we accept the increase of the water. Once again, we have not had an increase for the system in.
12 years at least.
At, at least 10 years. And then we're trying to ensure that the system pays for itself, no more or less. And then with just a small amount of cushion for, for the system. And we take all these notes to ensure that the maintenance is built into the cost, so the system is fully paying for itself. Okay, all right. All in favor, sign about me. Now, you same sign.
Chairman, you know, he did say that, you know, by putting everything in that enterprise fund where it needs to be, and you review it, and you see, you see where you are. And then, you know, you won't wait 10 or 12 years to adjust it again. You may have to adjust it in a lot sooner if, if need be.
I guess.
But hopefully by putting everything in there.
It will.
It'd be self-sufficient and, and we would know a lot sooner than 12 years, you know, 12 years.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right, thank you. LCPC.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners.
Hello.
I'm here to present a waiver request for the 15 West Town Homes. They're requesting a waiver from the requirements to install curb, gutter, and sidewalk on Curtis Road along the length of their property, of the property of this project. ME SAC Engineering designed this project. The owner is RTS Homes. This project will be 74 lots for Town Homes. And it, as you can see, the property is between West 15th Street and Curtis Road. The city of Heinsville has, for all of the RTS properties along West 15th Street, waived the curb and gutter and sidewalk along that portion of the road. So, now, since this butt's on the other side, they are requesting the waiver for that, for the county road. So, this project, here's the sewer pump station here to kind of give you perspective. And Governor's Quarters here, Independence Place Apartments. It's several properties here, some of which are wetlands. But basically, you'll see the wetlands are on, now we're tipped sideways here, so Fort Stewart's up here. West 15th Street here, this portion here, and this portion of wetland. So, what's being developed is here, but you'll see on the plans, a lot of this section along Curtis Road is going to be a drainage pond. So, here we are again, West 15th Street oriented this way. There's proposed to be a cut through between the two streets, existing roads. So, I imagine this will see quite a bit of traffic from people trying to get to the gate at Fort Stewart on West 15th Street. But you'll see all along here is, is a detention pond. And the plans show currently just sidewalk between, along the developable, developable lots here. And they are requesting to not have to put any curb, gutter, or sidewalk along this approximately 1,500 feet of frontage on Curtis Road. These are the requirements in the subdivision regulations that speak to having to put in curb and gutter along existing streets. However, what I've highlighted in yellow there, or in sidewalk as well, but what I've highlighted in yellow in both those provisions is that the governing authority does have the ability to waive this requirement. And as a kind of reminder, RTS Homes also has a project on Ruben Wells Road where the county did waive curb, gutter, and sidewalk in lieu of, I think there was a certain amount of money that was required that they were going to put towards improvements on, I think it was Live Oak Road, Live Oak Church Road, if I'm not mistaken. Live Oak Church, yes. This is the waiver request. They talk about it, about what it is. But they say, the bottom paragraph, that this area has no pedestrian access options within miles of the 15th Street Town Homes due to its placement along Curtis Road. Furthermore, existing utilities are present along the edge of the roadway, which would require relocation and loss of service for a temporary period. Curb, gutter, and sidewalk installation, in our professional opinion, our being ME SAC Engineering, would cause complexity with operations and maintenance with little benefit to the surrounding community. So, this is waivers do not go before the planning commission. I'm just here to present. We are not, the planning commission is, does not have a recommendation or, but both Mr. Sack and Mr. Long can speak for each.
Mr. Sack.
Side of the argument. Thank you.
Well, I guess both of the gentleman, I was, let me, let me, let me preempt you. We all, I know that we share the best for the future of Liberty County.
Absolutely.
And I know that we share the idea of long-term planning for the future, even when you and I are both not in our roles now.
We, we do. We do. And I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit.
If you will.
Because our, our interests align in that aspect. In this, in this particular instance, the, it's really the existing cross-section of the road and the ditch that is along the road that doesn't give us enough space to effectively pour sidewalk and curb and gutter there without piping the entirety of that ditch. And without really a, in my opinion, without a plan for a future road expansion there, it, it would be a, an, an investment that would probably get torn up in the future and rebuilt when there is a plan for that road. That, that's my opinion. I did ask Trent to go look at it. Hopefully, he agrees with me. That is my assessment, that it's really, to put a sidewalk, curb, and gutter in there on, on that road, at that curve where super elevation would probably be needed, would, would be a waste of an investment there. And that's why we're asking for the waiver. Really, that's what it comes down to. And before I said that, I wanted to say the next time Mr. Powell asks to be moved up in the agenda, the answer needs to be no. I love it. Trent, if you would.
I'm not going to touch that, man.
He hasn't been here in 12 years.
Yeah, but Marcus knows as well as I do, we, we all have.
So, you all know him.
Been calling over the years.
Y'all know him.
We, we've all heard.
But we know him now.
And we, we get it all. So, we, we understand. So, Marcus is absolutely right. There's a lot of investment in that area that's not going to be connected to anything. So, you know, our ordinances basically say, all right, let's go through and let's build these things incrementally as we go along. So, if you look at this part of Curtis Road, you know, my first impression is, all right, let's not try to do curb and gutter because then you got, you got drainage issues and the way you try to make that work, you just have curb and gutter on one side. It'd be kind of awkward in that area there. And it's like, okay, maybe you could put some sidewalk along the backside of the right away and do some of that. But Marcus is right. As we go along, if we ever decide we want to do something different with Curtis Road, then we've got a sidewalk that we've got to replace or rebuild. Now, it all boils down to what the vision of the county and what we want the vision and the direction of the county to go to. So, I think in the area that they're looking at, that they're definitely going to put it in the areas that are developed with the houses. I, I think that's a definite must because if we do do something in the future, those are areas we don't want to impact at all. And we'll have a little bit more freedom in the areas that are left open. But it really boils down to, you know, what do you guys want for the vision of Liberty County? Do we want to be trying to put these curb and gutters in now, or do we want to wait until later? So, I, I, I don't have any gripe one way or another. I do agree in all of Marcus's arguments for not putting it in. I mean, if I was in his position, I'd certainly ask for the same questions. Because it's going to be a fair amount of money to put that in that is not necessarily going to, may not service as well in the long run. So, but, you know, it, it depends on what your vision is for the county.
And this move, and I'll let you chime in, this move is, would not have any adverse effect on drainage.
No. It's, not putting the sidewalks in would not hurt the drainage. It won't change the drainage at all.
I believe that road, that cut-through road is going to be great for those folks that live because, you know, coming out of Curtis Road now, in fact, I had a guy ask me about it Saturday. When we're going to get a red light at Curtis? I said, "We probably need one at Live Oak Church first," you know, about to pause it a little bit. So, I, I, and I was glad to see the road will, you know, go from side to side. But at this time, and I'm all for putting sidewalks where they need them to be and curb and gutter where it's going to help us. But, you know, I, I don't know what hap, you know, on Curtis Road, I know a lot of that's in the city of Heinsville, if not all of it. But, you know, we haven't seen too much, where there's no sidewalks on Curtis Road whatsoever. Or on 15th Street.
Right.
At all. Because I think at, you know, in the future, you will see expansion of that road and poss, and possibly Curtis Road with, with that buildup back there.
If we make improvements, it's very likely that.
That's the vision to say.
This extra 1,500 feet of sidewalk will have to get redone.
Curtis Road goes.
On 196 and ties back around to like Ruben Wells and.
Ruben Wells. And then it turns into.
There's no sidewalk starting at, not 196 going that way, are there?
No.
All you're going to have is grass, and then you're going to have a patch of sidewalks and you're going to have grass again?
I know. It, it, it wouldn't be viable right there, put that in it.
Of course, Gary probably goes out there as much as anybody, but.
No, Marty, you, you said that the city waived curb and gutter on, on which street the city of Heinsville did?
No, the city of Heinsville waived curb and gutter and sidewalk on West 15th Street because Trevor owns a lot of the property.
Yeah, because the city, county.
Right, yes. And I think their feeling was there. I think down the road, there will be improvements on West 15th Street.
Will be.
The city's not requiring anything on 15th Street.
Yes.
And we kind of want to follow suit on that. But now on Curtis Road, all of, all of Curtis Road is in the county?
Correct, yes. Curtis Road is a county road.
I'm looking at this, this drawing here, Marcus. It's the, I guess it, it would be the west side of Curtis Road that we're talking about.
Yep.
I think we're providing sidewalks here to the back of this lot here. We're just asking to not have.
Not do that.
So, we'll have a developed areas that have rocks part of the road, but not.
And, and also not at this, along the wetlands. In that section north of the developed lot.
This will be a pretty finished area right here. We're regrading some of this. So, it'd be pretty finished. I feel like those sidewalks have a good chance to stay with any improvements to come down the road. But this area, there's significant drainage in that ditch. It's just going to take a much heavier effort to make sidewalk work in that area.
Now, this development is in this, is it in the city of Heinsville?
Yes, sir. It's in the city.
But, but the, that part of the road.
Road is in the county.
That's right.
In the county. Okay.
They'll get the water from the city of Heinsville.
I was wanting to talk, ask Ms. Thrift, that, that's a road that they mow, the county mows, and they'll be driving over the sidewalks, that looks to me like going down to it.
Uh, if we put them there, they will.
That's what I'm saying. That area right there probably needs to be left open unless we start at one end of the road and go all the way to the other end, and I know.
It's all ditch out there and corvids, so.
It's still wet out there, I know that.
That'd be the best.
All right, Commissioner Thrift, let's see. We yield to you, ma'am.
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we waiver, waiver curb and gutter and sidewalks for the 15th West Town Homes.
Is there a second? Motion second, we approve the waiver as requested by LCPC. Any further discussion? All in favor, show them hands, please. Waiver's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Conditional use Leroy Koffer Highway, Mr. Richardson.
Good afternoon, Chairman Lovett, members of the board.
Hello, sir.
Our first zoning request today is, our zoning action is a conditional use request. It's been submitted by Mr. Derek Archer for an event hall and a bed and breakfast. This property is located at 2762 Leroy Koffer Highway. And as you can see there, the parcel number 138005. And this is our add in the coastal curry and our sign on the property.
This you or Stevens?
And this is a vicinity map showing Leroy Koffer. You might recognize, this is Rick's free service here, and this is the Great Southern here. So, this is just immediately before you get to Great Southern on the left-hand side of the road. And you probably recognize that big, that big house that sits there beside Great Southern there. That's a rather large, single-family house. It's got a detached, several bay carport with a accessory building on the, attached to that as well. So, it's a pretty, pretty large building area on the property. And this is the zoning map. This, this property here is zone ER1, the entire parcel is zone ER1. And this flood plain, it is not in the flood hazard area. And wetlands, there really aren't any wetlands on the property either. As their plaque is showing that it's just under three acres of land. And this is the narrative. What they're asking to do is, they want to have an event center. I mean, that's their primary purpose. This is a big property. It lends itself to that type of use. Have it available for people to have weddings and different kinds of events there. They want to, they understand that they have current regulations regarding the use of private property for short-term rentals on Airbnb. There, there aren't any current regulations in the county for short-term rentals such as Airbnb or VBRO. But they want to go ahead and get approval for running a, a regular bed and breakfast in this facility. So, the conditional use request this evening is for an event center to have weddings and special events. But they also want to operate the property as a bed and breakfast. And this is the, just a concept plan here, just kind of showing what they're proposing to do. This is existing driveway. You saw the existing turnaround there in front of the house. This is the house structure itself. That's the detached carport structure with an accessory dwelling here on the back. The caretaker for the facility will be, will reside in that accessory dwelling unit there, attached to that garage structure. They're talking, they're just showing areas here, a gazebo, and some areas where they might have, might stage some of the events on the property. Also point out here that they, they propose to put in. Also point out here that they propose to put in a evergreen hedge right here along the front of the property to provide a little bit of privacy from the highway into the, for the privacy of the events. And again, just some more pictures of the property. And that's the five-bay carport structure there, and that's the accessory dwelling unit where the caretaker will live. And of course, most of the events will take place in the big building or on the grounds. And that's just a shot looking at the driveway. Great Southern is here, looking back toward Heinzville. And another shot looking in the same direction back toward Heinzville. We had to look at, there are six conditions that we need to look at for granting of a conditional use. Number one, the use shall not adversely affect the economic values or physical appearance of the neighborhood or the area surrounding. We answered, we concluded that it would not. Number two, the use shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the purpose and intent of the land use district. We answered that, yes. This district is designated as agricultural forestry. But the highway, Leroy Coffer in this area, is designated as a mixed-use rural corridor, which would be compatible with what they're asking for here. Number six, the establishment, I mean, sorry, number three, the establishment and operation of the use shall not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. We concluded it would not. Number four, the use will not create an undue burden on transportation, including streets, transit, schools, utilities, and public safety. We answered no to that one. Number five, the design shall minimize adverse physical, environmental effects on adjacent properties, including adverse visual effects, buffer zones where necessary would be needed to shield any adverse factors. We concluded, yes, a commercial driveway and parking improvements will be required as part of the site plan review for this project. And that would be reviewed by the county, and they would have to meet the county standards. And of course, for the commercial driveway, they'd have to get a permit from GDOT to build that. Because currently, it's just a residential driveway. So, the driveway will definitely have to be improved. And there will be required off-street parking to go with the event center. And number six, we haven't identified any additional requirements that would be needed for this project. Planning Commission heard this at their, at their February meeting, and they recommended approval with standard conditions. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Is the petitioner here, sir?
Yes, sir.
Would you please come and just, give us a little more inside view on that. We heard from Mr. Rickerson. We just want to hear from you on.
The LCPC team does a great job. Thank you very much for representing. I just want to thank you all for being here today. So, this is a longtime dream of my wife and I to be able to run something of a bed and breakfast and wedding event center. I come from a large family. My wife does, too. Whenever we vacation, we always look for a large enough facility to be able to accommodate all the extended family. So, when I saw this property come on the market, and for some of you, it was on the market for a very long time. For me, I said, yes, I want to go ahead and make a dream come true with that property on Leroy Coffer. And so, we were able to get the bid accepted, and we've done a number of renovations in the property. And we look to you now to bless this. We would love to bring business to the community through encouraging florists, photographers, wedding and event planners, and of course, local caterers as well.
I'm just a little curious about your parking plans.
On one of the pictures there, click back on it maybe a little bit. Okay, go back to the site map. So, it's a great question. On this one here, you'll notice on the right-hand side of the current driveway, there currently is space for people to do diagonal parking. So, you could probably get about ten spaces there. And then there's a lot of area in front of it, the additional parking area there. You could get probably about another twenty spaces for that. We did have the sewer and septic do a site inspection as well, and they said that the place would accommodate up to about a hundred and fifty people. So, between the parking spots there, we should be able to accommodate somewhere around seventy-five to eighty people, depending on how fast, how much you pack them into the car. There is room to go ahead where we have the wedding and event tent pavilion. We could expand that for additional parking if needed, and then move that building more towards where the gazebo is. The idea is where the gazebo is, is to be able to have outdoor weddings, so putting up chairs. So, we'd really prefer not to take that space if we don't need to. But the way I look at it, sir, is if we need to restrict the number of people at the event for capacity reasons, we're willing to do so.
Jeff, what he be required to do as far as making contact with DOT, nothing?
Yes, he absolutely will have to reach out to GDOT and get a commercial driveway approved and built.
And work with Mr. Trent Long, I understand.
I want to make sure you're aware of all that, because sometimes folk come in, they're not aware of those things, for goodness.
Yes, sir. It'll be my first time. A lot of new starts here. I'm willing to learn.
Commissioner.
Where's your septic?
Septic's gonna be right behind, to the left of the gazebo. So, that's the pond. There's a nearly one acre pond in the back.
It's one of those raised septic.
It's a raised, yes, sir. Yeah. During the snowstorm, we tried sledding down it.
Where's your water system?
Water system's gonna be on the right-hand side of the caretaker's cottage in the far-right corner, so opposite side of the property.
Okay. I had some questions, but you've already answered them. You did a great job. My other question would be, is, I guess, possible consideration, may have to put in a D cell lane or not?
That would be a require, that could possibly be a requirement from GDOT. They would make that call.
That could be an expensive cost, depending on what they want you to do.
What is that, a D cell?
A D cell lane.
Oh, okay.
If the state wants that off that state highway.
Okay, understand. There is a turn lane right now on the northbound side, as you head towards Savannah and ninety-five. So, there is a turn lane there, but as you come towards Heinzville, there's not. That could be expensive. Someone would consider.
Just something to think about. Is that the turn lane right there?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, that's your driveway right there?
Yes, sir.
How's that going to line up going north and you need to turn in? Would that line up with it, or would you have to go down to the next turnaround, come back?
No, sir, you can turn. There's actually one right now where, right, yeah, right there. So, that's gonna be Great Southern, but right there. So, we actually put a light in because many people were turning into the Great Southern driveway because it's hard to see at night. So, we put a light in because those driveways are so close together so that you can see ours clearly on a left-hand turn.
So, we don't have a short-term rental ordinance?
There are people, I assure you, there are people in Liberty County who do Airbnbs, and there is no ordinance. The county's ordinance doesn't care whether you rent by the month or by the week.
I know, hear that on the news a lot with the Tybee and Bluffton and Chatham County. I guess we need to make it on our to-do list.
It was one of the attractions. Chatham charges a fair bit for a short-term rental license. So, it was one of the attractions when doing our research for Liberty County.
With your new proposed driveway, if the state bucks against you, you might find it cheaper to stay with your original driveway.
Okay.
That's just a thought.
And how would that affect the site plan?
You'd have to work with you, how you gonna park people coming in and out of one driveway versus having two.
Yes, sir.
Your proposed driveway, they'd probably want to hit you up with a D cell lane or something right there. But those people would have to come out and all go towards Heinzville. Because the other driveways adjacent to where you could go left or right.
Yes, sir, correct. Yeah, there's currently a roundabout in there. So, part of the idea was if anyone needed to go, take a left, they would just go around the roundabout and make their exit that way. Anyone going to the right, we would just help with the flow of traffic for any kind of events there. It's not an easy equation, but I'm up to the challenge.
I'm good. I want you to have your business. I just wanted you to look at some.
Thank you, sir.
Things that I see.
I greatly appreciate that. This is all new territory for me.
Yes, sir.
Ready for a motion, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation coming from LCPC.
Is that second of the motion?
Second.
Motion second, we approve the requests presented by LCPC for the conditional use Leroy Coffer Highway. Venue for, you calling it a event center?
Yes, sir. The official name that we would like to register is Midway Manor.
Midway Manor, okay, alright.
Nurse and home.
Alright, all in favor, show up hands, please. Is the name written in cement?
Not yet, sir, not yet. We can take votes.
You might want to. Free search.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, sir. Chair, ten motion going to public hearing for rezoning. Second, all in favor, our rezon petition, South Coastal Highway and Oak Creek Road, Mr. Rickerson.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next request is a rezoning petition that's been submitted by Mr. Gary Riles with SNF Holdings Company to rezone eighty-eight point forty-three acres from A1 Agricultural and AR1 Agricultural. The frontage of this property is zone AR1 to Light Industrial LI for a storage warehouse facility. The primary purpose of this request is to permit the development of storage warehouses on the property, designed especially for use by SNF for storing finished products. The property is located on South Coastal Highway and also borders on Oak Creek Road and the incorporated area of the county. And this is our add in the Coastal Courier. This is our add here on Coastal Highway. And this is the, I'm sorry, the sign on Coastal Highway, and this is the sign on Oak Creek Road. And this is the vicinity map. You can see the property is sort of a triangular-shaped piece of property. This is Coastal Highway US seventeen. This is Oak Creek Road here. So, it's kind of located in between those, and it's also bounded by a power line easement going through here. It's part of a bigger property, but they're just asking to rezone the property that's located between seventeen, Oak Creek Drive, Oak Creek Road, and the power line easement. And this is just a closer-up vicinity map, just showing in the hatched area where they're proposing to build the site and also just the area that they're asking to have rezoned. And this is the zoning map, just showing the existing zoning. You can see here along the highway is AR1, but in the interior of the property, over along Oak Creek Road is A1 Agricultural. I just also want to point out that this is not spot zoning because, or would not be spot zoning because there's a undeveloped industrial tract directly across the lower, from the lower boundary of the property. And there's also a industrial tract up here. This is the Anderson Daybreak property that y'all rezoned a few years ago. And of course, all this area you see over here is the Tradeport West property that's owned by the Development Authority. And then down here is the industrial complex that's in Riceboro that's made up of the existing Kemtow facility and also the Interstate Paper Facility.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, when you say spot zoning, does spot zoning have to be property to property, partial to partial connected? Or in the area?
Not necessarily, but just in the general area. But in this case, it would be separated by roadway. This is directly across Highway seventeen there, and then this is directly across Highway seventeen from another industrial property that y'all recently rezoned. This is the flood plain map. There is some flood hazard area down on the, down on the lower part of this property. But the part that they're asking to rezone is not in a flood hazard area. And the wetlands, there are just a couple of isolated spots of wetlands, but largely the tract does not have wetlands on it. This is just a survey of the site. As I said, this is a part of a bigger property that comes across the road here, goes across the road and wraps around the Big Oak subdivision over here. And this is just a description of what they're wanting to do with the eighty-eight acres. They're looking at moving, they currently are using, storing some of their finished product on the main campus there in Riceboro. And they're also renting some warehouses in Savannah. So, they'd like to consolidate all of this storage of their finished products into this property. They're looking at building a series of warehouses on this property that would meet their storage needs. And I think the purpose of this is to open up some of their existing campus there in Riceboro to make some additional production facilities there. But you can see the product that they're storing there, the finished product is called, I'm gonna give a try at this, polyacrylamide powder. This is one of their main products. And it's a product that goes into drinking water. So, it's considered to be safe and non-hazardous material. And this is their concept plan that they're proposing to do. Highway seventeen here, Oak Creek Road here. Ultimately, they're looking at having five warehouses arranged, something like this. I think this is subject to change, and you can ask their engineer about that when he comes up. Then they're also looking at relocating some of their administrative buildings that are currently in Riceboro out to this area adjacent. You can see there's no connection proposed between those. So, the administrative building at this time would have two entrances or two points of egress onto Highway seventeen and the warehouse complex here, along with the parking spaces here in the rear, would also have two entrances. This would be the truck entrance, and this would be, I guess, an automobile entrance here. And you can see that the rest of the property would be taken up as green space here in the rear and a major detention pond here. And this is just a view. You can see that power line easement there. That's the boundary. All the development would be up in the upper end of that. And this is just another view of Highway seventeen looking back toward Riceboro. And this is a view of the, from Oak Creek Road. And another view from Oak Creek Road. Our zoning analysis, does this property have reasonable economic value as it's currently zoned? It does. Number two, does the property conform to the Fort Stewart Joint Land Use Study? It does. Number three, does the proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? And our answer there is the Comprehensive Plan designates this property as residential low-density in the back area. The designation along Highway seventeen is mixed-use rural corridor on the front area. And just point out that for the mixed-use rural corridor classification, industrial is considered to be a secondary land use in that land use zone. Number four, there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? We concluded there will not be an adverse effect. If adequate buffers and setbacks are used, visual impacts will be addressed during the gateway design review. Yes, this is, this is one of your gateway highways. So, as with any project and any non-residential, single-family residential project, on your gateways, they have to come back before you with their site plan. So, you will have another opportunity, if you approve this, you have another opportunity to look at their site plan, look at the buffers they've got, look at the lighting and their ingress and egress for the property. So, there is another step for this one because it's in the gateway area. Number five, is the proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? And our answer there was no, but there are industrial zone properties in the vicinity. And I pointed those out to you, some are directly across the street. Number six, would the zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, including streets, transit, and on schools, utilities, and the provision of public safety? We concluded no. Number seven, would there be a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? We concluded no. Number seven, would this change cause a domino effect? We did say yes on that one because you recently rezoned the Daybreak property, and then here's another one that's coming along shortly thereafter. So, definitely one of these tends to lend support to another. Number nine, are there unique historical sites that might be adversely impacted? We have not identified any. Number ten, is this property in a flood hazard area? You saw on the map it is not. Number eleven, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? We said no because there are other industrial properties in the area. And number twelve, are there unique conditions that support approval or denial? And we did not identify any. We took this to the Planning Commission at their March eighteenth meeting, and they recommended approval with standard and special conditions. And the special conditions are maintain at least a seventy-five-foot existing vegetative buffer. There are some medium-sized pine trees on the property. It's pretty much fully wooded. They recommended maintaining a seventy-five-foot existing vegetative buffer along Oak Creek Road and South Coastal Highway. Number two, no direct access to Oak Creek Road, no driveways on that end. Only all access would come into the property from Highway seventeen. Number three, a traffic study by a professional traffic operations engineer would be required. And number four, an interest site sound study shall be performed in the property that particular relates to backup vehicle noise or whatever, and whatever the results are of that study, SNF would agree to mitigate that. So, those are the four special conditions that the Planning Commission attached to the recommendation of approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. Sack is here on behalf of the applicant.
I know seventeen is a state highway. Go back to that section real quick. Okay, I guess we can use that one. What would be the proposal right there to deal? What would be the proposal right there to deal T for a decel lane going south?
I think I'll let the engineer answer that question, but I think it would definitely be GDOT's call.
Right, I'm aware of that, I'm just saying, if you had to make a recommendation.
Good afternoon again, I'm Marcus Sack with ME SAC Engineering here today speaking on behalf of SNF. For that question, right now, we're proposing a decel lane as well as a left turn lane, so we anticipate that there'll be enough traffic that would trigger both of those, and honestly, it's the safest way to get trucks in and out of there, so we're gonna make those improvements.
So that decel lane would be more or less, if I had to put it in picture in mind, like the one going to Interstate Paper, where they would make a left turn and your continuum of traffic would go to the right?
That's right, that's right, yeah.
And you did say seventy-five foot buffer?
Yes, sir, that's one of the things we conceded to at the LCPC meeting, we were initially proposing a fifty-foot buffer, but we raised that to seventy-five foot buffer after the residents nearby spoke of their concerns, we increased it by twenty-five feet.
Joe, did you have anybody, anyone at the meeting?
We've had several people speak at the meeting.
I'm headed that direction, I'll let you get done first.
Okay, go ahead, I'll come back.
Do we have a sign-up sheet for the, we did not? Let's see, Mr. Marcus, you know the drill.
Part us off, alright.
So if you all are here, and I recognize some faces that like to speak to this project, please come and state your name for the record, and then, let's see, is it someone else besides this gentleman that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Houston, okay.
There's others.
Okay, if you don't mind, just come on up to, okay, alright.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, please.
My name is Joseph Cook, I live right there, in that property. Sirs and ma'am, in the military, they tell us to state our business upfront, vote no on the proposed. Even though the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan lists the secondary use of this property as industrial, it is currently zoned for residential or for agricultural. I disagree about the spot zoning, but that's here nor there. The following opposition statements were generated by the Liberty County Planning Commission. Does the property have reasonable economic value as currently zoned? Yes. Does the proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? The answer is, the Comprehensive Plan designate this property as residential, low density in the back area, and designated as mixed-use rural corridor in the front area. That should be it, I mean, secondary use is industrial, you could say that about anywhere. So the land is suitable as own. By comments generated in the hearing, the previous one, it was acceptable to the residents for housing units, but not acceptable for industrial use. Will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of the nearby properties? The answer, there will not be an adverse effect if adequate buffers and setbacks are used, visual impacts will be addressed during the gateway design review. The residents at the time stated three hundred feet, a hundred yards, from that wall to that wall is sixty feet. Now imagine fifteen additional feet, and then you've got nothing but warehouses, two stories. Sir, I believe you live on Lewis Fraser Road? Ten seventy? No? If there's a church right down the road from, on Lewis Fraser, correct?
Several of them.
Alright, imagine if you had warehouses stuck out there for you, alright? The Planning Commission and the representing engineer suggested a barrier of seventy-five feet along Oak Creek Road and Coastal Highway seventeen. My position personally, seventy-five feet is equal to twenty-five yards, which basically equates to a four-lane road with no dividing median. When you contrast this to multiple-story facilities with major light and vehicle traffic, it is not enough. A major visual and soundproof barrier would be required between Oak Creek and Coastal Highway residents. Is the proposed use suitable in view of the nearby uses? The answer, no, but there are industrial zone properties in the vicinity. Daybreak construction, as you are well aware, was put into place before the zoning was approved, it was after the fact. That shouldn't have a bearing on this. Just because you do something wrong the first time, don't mean you get a second chance at it like that. Would the change, change cause a domino effect? Your answer, yes, we don't want it. Positions of the attending residents of the area, property values will be impacted, especially those bordering the proposed facility. There is no infrastructure currently in place in the way of water, sewage, flood control, and firefighting. SNF should not be allowed to draw from the current water table aquifer as all residents are currently on running wells. Industrial depletion jeopardizes residents' sustainability and survival. The actual construction of the warehouses, a hardball surface is non-permeable, residents objected based on personal observation that groundwater pooling occurs after pretty much any good rain. Preventing natural drainage will lack, with a, will, with lack of a suitable sewage system will result in property flooding. There is also the possibility of groundwater contamination through facility runoff. Anyone who has lived in this area for any length of time knows that if SNF has a major event, everyone in the area is at a risk. The only question is how many will it affect, and in what direction? Fire hydrants, as they were discussed, don't need to be placed every five hundred to one thousand feet, but in multiples around each warehouse. There is nothing like too little and too late, especially in a hazardous waste scenario. Traffic congestion, I'll leave that to the gentleman behind me. I will say this, somewhere down the line, y'all are gonna wanna widen that road. If they want this facility, and you wanna give it to them, then they set aside the land for that road to be widened, don't come trying to take mine. No imminent demand. Per Georgia law, economic development or increasing the tax base is not a justifiable reason to take the property from someone. It was proposed by a fellow resident, Dr. Pittman, that the Midway Industrial Park is one point nine miles up Highway seventeen north. Put it there, that's what it's for, that's why you condemn land for it. That way, the jobs will still be present, the land is preserved for homes and agriculture with negative impact on the surrounding community. Hazardous waste storage. Initial storage intent and what may develop are two major opportunities for failure. To put forth a final requirement of five warehouses, each having thirty-six loading docks, and being a multi-story construction for storage demonstrates poor manufacturing practices, or the intent to open space for rentals causing more light, noise, and traffic congestion. In closing, don't do to me what you wouldn't have happen to you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Houston?
I'd like to say good evening to everybody, to Chairman.
Say your name for the record, please, sir.
My name is Mr. Steve Houston, I live on Oak Creek Road, and I'm like my neighbor right there, even though he live on seventeen, I live on Oak Creek. I guess I really, I'm opposed up at you, I really don't wanna see the facility there, but I don't know what Liberty County plan on doing, that y'all planning on going along with it in order to put it out there, it's 'cause if you do, not only with the seventy-five foot buffers, by me being a truck driver, and you having a warehouse, you got to have, if you got pedestrian there, you gonna have more than just, I heard my neighbor said that last meeting, you know, each truck, you know, OSHA require each truck when they back up have a beeper, but if you got pedestrian there, you have to blow your horn as well. So OSHA require that as well, for you to blow your horn, and I know most of those horns on those trucks are air horns. But, and what I'm trying to say, to say this is, by us being on Oak Creek Road and on seventeen, not only the seventy-five foot buffers can we request a fence, if they do put it up there, a soundproof fence like they have in the interstates, that way it eliminates some of that noise. And also too, on Oak Creek Road where I live at, I don't have a, a little, I guess it's a little thing right here, uh, yeah, right in here, I live before my neighbor, before the dock door right there, he was saying, this is a bad drainage problem right there, right there, right in front of my house, on Oak Creek Road, it's a drainage problem there, been there for years. I don't know why all the part of Oak Creek Road be dry, that be dry, but somehow or another, when it rain, when the hurricane, tropical storm, that water come straight down right there, and both sides, 'cause sometime water be cross the road right there near my house. My house is right in this area, but you see the water be on both side, and that drainage problem is real bad. So when that get there, it's probably gonna make it even worse. So my thing is, if we please, if you do decide to pass this, which I don't want it, but I'm just saying, if you do, please, can we get some fence for seventeen and Oak Creek Road, some type of noise ordinance, so when those trucks back up, they have to blow their horn because that beeper on that truck is not gonna be enough if they put the warehouse there. So I'm requesting that as a resident, that can we at least get that done, if y'all approve it, if not, you know, that's one of the things I want to express, you know, 'cause me being a truck driver, you do, when you back it up to the warehouse, or to the dock door, you have to blow your horn. So like I say, that's gonna be a problem for people who living in there resident, and the one across the street, I mean, if they do decide to do it, but can we get a privacy fence that help with the noise? It's like a sound barrier. So that's one of my things I wanted to talk about as well, so.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
And y'all have a blessed day.
Yes, sir. Please state your name for the matter of record. And put that.
Name's Olin Garbuth.
Put that microphone down a little bit, if you. There you go.
My name's Olin Garbuth, I live over on Little Oak Road. I did a little survey on my own traffic on seventeen during the rush hour, I don't have my numbers with me, but I've got them pretty well in my head. There was a hundred and thirty-six trucks went up and down seventeen, a hundred and eighty-some cars up and down on seventeen going both ways. That's a lot of traffic. Is the Sheriff's Department gonna be sitting out there waiting for them people, trying to give them good directions or whatever? I don't think so. The sheriff's office is overly taxed as it is now. Water, we, everybody out there in that area has groundwater for their wells. And that, the impact on that, SNF say, oh no, we're gonna have, yeah, there will be an impact on it. Plus, that area where they wanna put the warehouses, that's a habitat for animals. When they do a clear cut, we got hogs all over the place ripping up our yards and everything. Or one of my neighbors, they have to put up a little electric fence to keep the hogs out of the yard. And some of them people out there, they've got some beautiful yards. Also, deer is in there. Deer gets hit, they run into your car, if you're going down the road, they'll run right into the side of your car. They use that because it's a safe area, it's not being hunted. That don't include the possums and the raccoons. So you're taking a habitat from animals, their living source, sorry. I know when whoever owned it before, and they did a clear cut, we was invaded by hogs, definitely invaded. I got my freezer full. And I give some to my neighbors too, but what I'm saying is, we need to take care and keep that place. When they did a clear cut before, that, the invasion of the animals, it lasts about two or three months, and then we'd be good for the next ten or fifteen years. So please, vote no for this. I'm asking you from the bottom of my heart, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sack, you wanna come back in? While he's coming, Jeff, the statement that the secondary category doesn't exist anywhere else, is that a true statement, you wanna address that?
It's a feature in our Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in 2016. Some roads like Highway seventeen in this area, and Leroy Cofer, which we talked about on the previous one, we don't expect all those to be strictly single-family residential, so we called them mixed-use residential, and that allows some limited commercial and some secondary industrial use.
As one that, make sure just not just that road. Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess I'll start with traffic. We went over this in the LCPC meeting, right now, as Jeff stated earlier, SNF has two warehouses, one in Savannah and one on site in Riceboro. The idea is to move the one in Riceboro to this site, and move the one from Savannah back over here to this site, we capture those jobs and that economy right here in Liberty County where our largest employer works. The point of me saying that is, that every bit of product that's made in Riceboro gets trucked to these warehouses already, they're going to Savannah, the trucks are already on the road, they're bringing it in, they're bringing it out. We're gonna move it just a little, less than a mile down the road, set up warehouses here, the same trucks will be on the highway, with the exception of a small add, which would be the short haul from Riceboro to these warehouses, so the traffic impact is pretty minimal. We will do the TIA to make sure we get the, that we mitigate the movements at the intersection, and have a safe highway there, but the traffic add is very small in this. Contrary to a whole lot of single-family houses on there, if you talk about two hundred acres of single-family houses, it'd be a pretty heavy traffic burden. In fact, I believe in the LCPC meeting, the majority of the people felt, that spoke there felt like they'd rather have this warehouse than they would the single-family homes, as long as the sound was attenuated, that's why we added the additional buffer. Now, they did ask for a three-hundred-foot buffer, if you take three-hundred-foot around that property, you're talking about almost, I think it was fifty or sixty acres, so over half of the property would have been taken up in buffer, which is not fair to the current property owners. So we settled on seventy-five, we agreed to do a noise study, and what that, when the noise study's done, whatever suggestions that it makes, we would take those and implement them on-site to make sure we attenuate any noise going to the neighborhood. We've agreed to do all those things. Now, another thing that came up was the hazardous waste. We have said multiple times that the material to be stored here is a benign material, it's non-hazardous whatsoever. So the question came up, what would happen if they ever wanted to store hazardous material? So I've talked with SNF, and they've agreed to say, if the need ever arose to store hazardous material at this site, they would have to make an application to LCPC, come back through this public process to you guys as a new application. So right now, no hazardous material will be stored, if there ever was a need for it, we'd be right back here, signs would be in front of the building, we'd be asking permission. Yes, sir.
On this sound study, if the sound study is done, and it proves that it needs, you need to do some additional work, y'all think, would y'all be willing to look at the soundproof fence?
Yeah, yeah, if it comes up, and it shows that there will be some decibel level outside of the limits of the site, and the only way to attenuate it is to put a sixteen-foot sound attenuating fence, then that's something we'd have to look at. But before we do that, you know, we're gonna do everything in our power to use the buffer, we may play with the site plan, rearrange the building so that they're blocking sound, there's a lot of other things we can do, and we're gonna run all of that through the sound model to make sure we protect the neighbors and do the right thing.
Okay, now, I heard Hold on a minute, sir. I heard him talking about the drainage right at the end of the road.
Yeah, that's on Oak level.
That our road? Is that a county road?
It's a county road, and go back to Trent.
Yeah.
Let's take a look at that and see what we can do, because it's gonna drain out to the state highway. Am I correct? Okay.
I'm not sure it drains out the state highway, I think.
I go back?
Yeah, all, all the water's trying to get over here towards, I think that's K Creek over there.
Okay.
So, um, and we're not gonna do anything on Oak Level Road, we'll have our seventy-five-foot buffer here. All of the impacts will be internal to the site with, and then the drive will be over here on Highway seventeen.
Where's your holding pond at?
Uh, detention pond's here, so like I said, all, all that water's draining down this way, so we've got the detention pond arranged on the low end of the site, um, it'll, it'll catch the water, which, um, and clean it before it gets released on, down the road.
Okay, because on that end of K Creek Road right there, it's always been a problem with drainages right there at the very beginning. Right, right in that, where's K Creek Road at?
K Creek Road isn't, isn't, that's the, uh, that's the power line easement, so we're pretty good ways away from K Creek Road.
What I'm saying, when your holding pond get full, it's gonna drain off, it's gonna drain to that ditch. And I am fully aware of that on that end.
Yes, sir.
We need to take a serious look at that.
Well, we will, we'll, we'll look at the downstream impacts over there, we'll look at the size of the pipes going under K Creek Road, but it, you know, if it, the, the whole point of the detention pond is to retain that water and release it at a rate that's, um, at or lower than the existing conditions, so the goal is not to make anything worse, right?
Uh, one thing, Mr. Chairman, I did talk to the mayor of Riceboro today, and they are going to be the ones supplying the water and sewage.
They are.
Yeah.
Won't be draw, drawing.
No.
Not, not putting another well in, the majority of, of the water is already being withdrawn from the aqua, aquifer, and we all know that a warehouse use, uses very little water, it's, it's not a big user at all, so it's very, very minor impacts in terms of water and sewer.
Are they single-story or two-story?
They're, they're a single-story, um, but they will be a fairly tall building, so I think that's what he means by a two-story type build.
You might wanna address the lighting too, Marcus, while you're talking.
Yes, sir, and, and the pine trees are pretty tall too, and they're getting taller, so the ones, in, internal to the site, the trees are pretty small, uh, but the ones along the fringes there are already pretty tall. We're not gonna touch them, we're gonna let them go, grow into a knot, um, in that seventy-five foot, so it'll be a pretty thick lush buffer. What, what was that, Chairman? Oh, the lighting, yeah, so probably the only real pollution that would contribute outside of, um, any type of, you know, your usual petroleum that would get onto the, uh, the parking lot or some suspended sediment in the parking lot that would go to the detention pond to be cleaned would be, um, light pollution. So we're gonna use, of course, uh, as required by the gateway, full cutoff lighting, which means the lights will shine down and not out or up, um, so there'd be, we would limit that light pollution to the site. And of course, then the, uh, the buffers would also help from that aspect as well. Uh, fire hydrants were men, were mentioned, I think in the, there was some confusion in the LCPC meeting, we talked about fire hydrants along Highway seventeen, so as that water line's extended, obviously we have a requirement to have fire hydrants, I think every thousand feet in the county. Of course, on-site, once we get on-site, we've got to have fire protection for the admin building and also the warehouses that would be in, within, I think it's three-hundred-foot of any corner of the building, so there'd be a lot more fire hydrants internal to the site as needed for fire protection. That would be worked out in site design. There was the comment of, of put it somewhere else, uh, this is the property that SNF owns, they're, they're not looking to purchase it, they have purchased it, uh, they have slated this to, to bring these jobs back to Liberty County. We analyzed it, looked like it would be a good fit for the zoning of Liberty County, think it's a good place. I know change is always hard, um, with respect to the neighboring communities, um, but the change is always happening as well.
I think the gentleman wanted to raise some.
Why can't you use the warehouses out there at ninety-five? It's got three or four brand-new warehouses, not being used. That's an industrial area.
Sir, it does, it, it just. Yeah, it, it, SNF, this, this was, I think timber property prior to?
It was, they bought it, uh, several years ago.
Yeah.
From, um, I don't, I can't remember if this was warehouse or a reoneer property, but they bought it several years ago.
And SNF purchases property, uh, we did hear initially it was gonna be for administrative, we did, no doubt about that. Then this, this is a, a different request to us, uh, but you can't just move something just because there's an industrial park up the street, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. In fact, when we talk about a trade port west, it has certain criteria, certain industries looking for, and, and it may not be looking for these kind of warehouses, so SNF is using property that they purchased, uh, what they deem proper for their operations.
That's right.
I, as Marcus explained, moving the warehouse from what's Savannah you said, you know, to here and those kind of things. So, so it's not as simple as just put it here, put it there, it just doesn't work that way, y'all. And we need to move on, give you last time.
You said seventy-five foot along Oak Creek Road, what about on the coastal highway side?
Uh, so again, and as the special conditions have shown, that, that seventy-five-foot buffer would be around the perimeter of the property with the exception of where we have breaks for, for access.
I have one million dollar question.
Hold on.
Sorry.
You gonna use, okay.
You fine.
I wanna hear the million dollar question.
Would the gentleman in the back, in the other areas around him where he represent how it floods, so? It, uh, is it possible with this seventy-five-foot buffer that you could help the county out with that drainage and let it come across that property if elevations allow?
So the, the idea of the buffer is for it to remain undisturbed, so it would be difficult for us to make any accommodations for stormwater and keep the buffer undisturbed. Now, we will accommodate water that currently runs through the site and, and put it in the detention pond. Again, Oak, Oak Creek Road, we're not, we're not doing anything over there, so it's gonna be tough for us to do, do much for you.
Just trying to figure out how we might could help him with the drainage issue.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just let Mr. Houston know while he's here, and I've been knowing him for a long time. That issue should have been given to Commissioner Stevens to look at some time ago.
We, we did, but like I said, you know, we just wanted to reach our time coming in, but not going.
I understand, I understand, but we, we, we take a note that we're gonna look at that for you.
Yeah, if, if, once we get out there working, if there's something sensible, I'm sure, we wanna be good neighbors, maybe there's something we can do. Uh, but Trent and I'll, uh, put our heads together on that up there.
I think I saw a hand behind you, Marcus, the young lady. He's not.
We're, we're getting into question and answer session now, but it, it's, it's pretty common to purchase property that is not zoned for your intended use. Uh, but the zoning regulations allow you to rezone that, so long as it meets certain criteria, which this one does. So oftentimes, you will purchase property with the intent of rezoning it, um, whether it's for a daycare center, a fast food restaurant, a school, um, or, or any number of things. It's, it's pretty par for the course, because a lot of the land here is agriculturally zoned. If it's date agriculturally zoned, uh, forever, then Liberty County could never grow, I'm not sure that anybody wants that.
Yeah. Ma'am, you out of order now. Yeah, hold on, yeah, hold on, um, all right, uh.
I think.
About to forget to come back.
I mean, I'm, 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 I, I have some questions too. I, I don't, I don't know where we're going right now with all this in the audience, but let's kinda reel this back in real quick. I, I just have a, a few questions, uh, I, I know you discussed about a, a noise study. Uh, how, how would that even happen prior to not approving? Cause, cause basically it's gonna be, be done by what, decibel?
That's right, yep, so you guys have a decibel ordinance, you know, after a certain time at night, noise can't be above this level. And to answer your question, it's done through a modeling system, so we would put in there, um, the expected noise makers, whether it's a, a horn or a backup beepers, you put that in the model, you put in the site characteristics in the model, and you're able to generate what the noise level is expected to be. Um, and then you can start adding attenuation methodology to see how that impacts the noise as it leaves the site.
Okay, so it's gonna be like a computer-generated?
That's right.
AI type of model?
That's right, I, I don't know if it's gotten to AI level yet.
It's probably AI, everything's AI now. Uh, and, and Mr. Ricketson, can, can we go back to the vicinity map real quick? Cause I, I think one of the first, uh.
That one?
The next one. There's vicinity on the top. It should be another one. There we go.
Okay.
There we go, uh, I noticed one of the first words out of your, in your statement, I, I think he was coming at me with that one, right? About the spot zoning, there we go. I remember, what was the name of that other company? Right, and I remember I questioned about spot zoning that. And, and we said it wasn't because we, actually, what, wasn't this particular, uh, piece of land parcel, wasn't it kinda suggested in, in that statement? That, that SNF recently purchased some land? I know I'm getting a little older, but I, I'm telling you, my memory's still pretty good.
I, I think it did, I, I made that presentation, I think I was transparent that there was some property purchased next door.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And this, and I, I know we, we talk about this comprehensive plan all the time, and it's always changing, and I, and I get it, like these corridors on seventeen, there's, like we said, there's some highways and some roads in our community that is kinda, you know, it's residential here, you know, it's commercial there, industrial in different parts, but man, we, we have to figure out a way to get this a little bit more structured and, 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 and you know, I'm, I'm supportive of growth, I'm supportive of, of businesses, especially, you know, when we talk about jobs and, and all, but, but also about being good stewards and also better neighbors. So whatever we could do to try to accommodate and make sure that the neighbors aren't being disturbed, because growth, growth is inedible, there's nothing we can do about that, you know? I mean, I wish I, I didn't have, you know, everything next to my neighborhood, but it is what it is. You know, I'm in Hinesville, we got a car wash everywhere, so, uh, so we can't, we can't stop the growth, but we could definitely try to be good neighbors. So my biggest concerns were the drainage, the traffic, definitely the noise study. I think that was all addressed in the hazardous material, but with the hazardous material, how will we know that that's what they have in there? Is there, I mean, is there gonna be some type of contractual agreement on the backend? Cause I mean, they, they could say, all we gonna do is keep the polymer, because that's what they call it, the polymer, but then they could put anything. It's in, is that the same thing that they, they have in their, their warehouses in Savannah?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's their finished product, so that's what they're shipping out, um, so they wanna get it off of their site, get it into a warehouse so a truck can pick it up. Right now, the majority of their hazardous material comes in on rail, um, and is stored on-site, and I mean, ve- very, the large majority, if not all, of the hazardous material is, is brought in bulk, um, so it's not something that you could store in the warehouse.
Okay.
Is the way I, it's been explained to me.
All right, and the word job was thrown around, uh, how, how many jobs are they estimating coming back?
I don't know, it's, it's a warehouse, um.
Probably five.
Uh, it's probably a little more than that, it'll, it'll probably have two or three shifts associated with it on any given day, so, you know, it's, um.
I ju, I just know warehouses don't really.
They're, they're, they're not, they're not huge employers, well, some of them are, some of them are, are really large employers and a lot of them pay pretty well compared to minimum wage.
Right.
I don't know the answer to that on this one.
Okay.
Mr. Stack, this is gonna be the last time I say anything, me and Commissioner Gueye was talking. Would you consider, and I'm just tiptoeing off of you here a little bit, but would they consider giving up an additional twenty-five foot and not have to put up the privacy fence with the noise, the noise barrier? Make it a hundred-foot and not do the noise, I'm concerned with what it's gonna look like as an eyesore if you have to put up that fence.
Yeah. I, I mean, yeah, I, I think, I think, I'd, I'd hate to give up any more buffer without talking to my clients first, right? But again, it, it, in, in the talking about the noise study and the fence, honestly, I think our position would be, if we do the noise study and it says we need a soundproof fence, we'd probably look to be reducing that buffer and, and it, in order to make the investment into that fence and have more developable property, right? So it's, it's a give and take of, of how we approach this. The buffer's really for screening, I think it'll have, um, it'll, it will be a thick buffer and I think it will have some noise attenuating qualities, but the, the screening is, is really what it's for, for the neighbors, and I don't know how much more we get out of another ten or fifteen feet, you know what I mean?
Look at it.
Yes, sir.
The trade-off might be, I'm trying to look at the expenses and.
Yep, and, and you know, once we do the noise study, uh, it'll all be in the site planning process, working through Trent. Um, I, I don't know if this would actually come back to them as far as a site plan.
Comes back to the board of commissioners as a gateway project, they will, they will review every detail of your site plan and including that buffer and those noise walls.
Yeah.
So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, so like they're concerned about the noise, if this sound study says you got to put up the fence, you're gonna wanna encroach a trade-off for twenty-five, thirty-foot or something to put it up, correct?
Possibly, I, I, I wouldn't say that now, I'm just saying there, there is potential. Um, if, if it required a hundred-foot fence, um, then there's no need to have any trees there, right? It's, like, that sort of thing, but I think, um, looking at this site and, and having knowledge about it, the, the reasonable answer is that, um, we can probably shift the buildings around, uh, for them to block the majority of the sound, use the buffer, um, and everything's gonna be fine. But if there is, if something does come up in the noise study, we'll certainly be applying that to the site. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a huge impact.
All right.
All right.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, let's see if I can put it in the right way.
Let's see, uh, do we need to come out of, um?
Yes, we do.
Make a motion, come out.
Okay, second, all in favor, sure, yes, all right, back in the regular session.
Okay, Chairman, I'm probably gonna need some help lining this up.
We'll work with you.
Commissioner Frazier.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve this rezoning with the special conditions, that the lights are turned to be where it will not be detrimental. If the sound barrier, if the noise study comes out, that we must have a barrier, that it will be put up, maintain the seventy-five feet. Also, the concern about water and sewage, which will be provided by Riceboro. Commissioner Frazier, help me out, go ahead.
And then, then also all the, uh, the recommend, well, special condition recommendations from LCPC as, as reported. I think.
That's it?
Oh, yeah.
And what's stored in it?
Oh, yeah, and also what's, make sure that, uh, what is stored in the warehouses.
Okay.
So you're, you're, you just want to, another condition is no hazardous materials will be stored.
Would, would EP somebody, AEPD, police that kind of thing anyway?
They would, they would, the state, the state patrol, that's, that's how we kinda ran into that situation with that, uh, fumigation company a few years ago. They, they blew the alarm and everybody responded.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
That's, that's the motion.
Thank you for the combined motion, all right. In first, all in favor, show your hand, please.
No, did we get a second?
I didn't get a second?
Second, I'll second.
All right, now, let's, let's make it official, all right, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, um, uh, young, let me go ahead and say this. Any rezoning application, go through Mr. Ricketson's office. All right, uh, insurance coverage, Mr. Seville. Is that really him?
This will be relatively short. This is the, uh, I think we have on your screen the, uh, insurance that we reviewed at the last meeting. And, uh, wanted to see if there's any questions on it at this point, if you had time to review it.
Last I heard, uh, you saved his money, right?
Yes.
I think it's working, we had a good year.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, uh, so I think, I think the, our long-term plan is. And, uh, so I think, I think the, our long-term plan is, is moving in the right direction.
Uh, want to hear from staff?
Yes, sir. We, uh, we recommend that we go, uh, with all the companies that Mr. Seville is, uh, proposing in this, in this, um, proposal. Because this, this is a hodgepodge of different companies that are part of this proposal.
Right.
All right. Any, any questions, Commissioner Foby vote?
I, I just want to say, we did have a pretty good discussion, but, you know, our, I see my insurance folks three or four times a year.
You do?
It's probably, it's probably good that.
I need, I need to.
Sir?
I need to then.
No, I'm saying, uh, you know, I, I try to visit with them, but, and, and bring them up to speed and they, they do the same thing. And, um, I, I appreciate you being here. I mean, this is your, I saw you on the TV the other time you were here, but, um, just generally speaking, you know, get with us if there's anything that we need to do ahead of time. Uh, I think this is gonna be a very lean rather, um, a budget year for a lot of people. Uh, a needs-based budget across the board, so let's just make sure we get ahead of it, um, for next year.
Yeah, and we're, uh, we talked with Mr. Richardson and we're making sure we're budgeting accordingly uh, for the, for the intentions.
That's the only thing that I forgot to say.
All right. And there's no changes since, since you presented, um.
No, this is the same, uh, same document.
Okay, all right. Chantain the motion then.
So move.
Second, second. We approve the, uh, insurance coverage. Mr. Seville, thank you for being so patient, sir. All in favor, show your hands, please.
One absent.
One absent.
Thank y'all. Look, look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your patience, sir. Okay. All right, New Liberty County Jail, government presentation, Chief Al Hagan and representatives. We thank you for your patience also.
Mr. Chairman, hopefully we got you all worn down with you to say yes and, you know, get out. But anyway, good afternoon, chairman and commissioners. Um, I'm Al Hagan, chief deputy servant, um, with Sheriff William Bowman. Our other staff is Major Melvin, Major Cromnow. And also, you'll be hearing from Mr. Paul Oakerson with Garmon Construction out of Indiana, as well as his assistant, Mr. Michael Johnston. But we're here, of course, w- working on, first of all, to ask for the Liberty County Commissioners to approve a jail, which is much needed in this county. As you know, we've been working for quite some time, trying to make sure we bring you all the best information we could to make sure when we build this time, that we build for the future and something that is within the law, so that we can properly serve the com- this community. Um, Liberty County Jail, that we're asking is the largest capital project that this county probably will be taking on. It sounds bad when you, not necessarily bad, but it sounds scary when you say that. But as we know, building and construction has almost doubled in the last five years. So with this, our current jail is more than thirty years old as it sits now. Um, there are state and federal guidelines that we have to constantly maintain and adhere to. Um, currently, we're the new de facto mental health facility. We all have family members around here. I'm pretty sure every family in this county in some way has someone suffering from mental health. So we are pretty much the mental health facility, but we gotta have a proper place to make sure we take care of those. Our jail also tells us that we currently have that we have no, nothing for rehabilitation. This county has, in the past, has been kind of where we lock them up and let them sit there all day and think of just, I guess, more th- negative things to do in the community. But it's been Sheriff Bowman's task. He works hard. He pushes us and asks us to come up with ideas that we can put a better product back on the street than we brought in. And I think that's, that's what we need to do, and I'm asking you all to help us in that way. Um, the jail itself is, it has been built in ways that is long past what the current asking or current guidelines can even fit. And we're basically holding it together with what we call taping Band-Aids. So, um, here, you'll hear from Major Cromnow. He'll give you some history on the jail. And, um, what I will ask you all to do, please, listen intently, ask all the tough questions. Cause we have reached out to Garmon, just to, when, when Sheriff met with Michael Johnston, found out that there's some great ways to build jails. And we constantly work and to help supplement this jail anyway. Not make money off it, but to help decrease a lot of the costs, because the cost is tremendous. But it's something this county is tasked to. I know it's been a long day, so I won't stand up here and preach to you. But, um, I will ask, um, Major Cromnow, this time to go through the PowerPoint, explaining why we truly need the jail, not just for the inmate, but for the safety of our staff as well. And you'll see the conditions and I would challenge all our commissioners, please come out and see the jail. We've had several commissioners do come out. I would, all would come out and tour that jail and see the con- work condition of our employees, as well as the condition that our citizens have to stay in. Remember, if we all have kids, if your kids get, say, arrested on a simple misdemeanor, he goes in the same cell with the person that's be in charge with murder. And that we don't need. That's a serious risk to the community. So I ask you to take all those things in consideration. And I yield at this time to Major Cromnow.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, my name's Sasha Cromnow. I'm the jail administrator for Liberty County Sheriff's Office. Uh, I've been in that position now, uh, for just over three years. And, and to say that I've learned a lot would be quite the understatement. I've been with the sheriff's office for twenty years and worked patrol and investigations most of that time. And, and I thought of jailers as, as glorified babysitters. Couldn't be further from the truth. Uh, I, I've been, there was a little bit of hubris there on my end and, and I've been humbled significantly. I'm not ashamed to say it. The, the, the jail, uh, as you all know, uh, as the chief alluded to already, uh, the original part of the jail's, uh, over thirty years old. The addition that we did, uh, is over twenty years old. We currently have two housing pods. Uh, we have two hundred and seventy-six actual beds, but our capacity is rated at three hundred and five. The way we get to three hundred and five is we put plastic bunk beds on the floors and, uh, stack them in. Thankfully, we haven't had to do that lately. But, but it has been done in Liberty County in the past. We have zero square feet for programming. By programming, I just mean, uh, GED training, rehabilitation, uh, church services, any of those things, mental health services, uh, drug treatment programs. We're not able to do any of those things at the Liberty County Jail, because there is no multipurpose room, no space, nowhere where we can gather, uh, more than just a handful of inmates and teach them anything. Tower one is the oldest part. That's thirty-two years old. Tower two's about twenty-two years old. Again, no space for, for, uh, programming. And that's not just an inconvenience, uh, that puts us in some peril with, uh, some Supreme Court rulings and some case law across the nation. When Sheriff Bowman took office, he asked the Georgia Sheriff's Association to come in, do a needs assessment for the Liberty County Jail. It's a multi-page document. I can sum it up for you. The gentleman that did the needs assessment for me, he told me, get a bulldozer, tear it all down, start over. Our current facility, uh, is past what's called the expected life, uh, the end of life range for detention facility. Uh, detention facility ages at about ten times, uh, the rate of a regular commercial building. We have open dorms, uh, in Tower one especially. We have several open dorms. And by open dorms, I mean they're not cells, there are no bars. Uh, it's, it's just sixteen beds in an open space, uh, with no separation for the inmates. Uh, the ratio of toilets and showers per inmate is too low according to Georgia jail standards and federal standards. Uh, the Eighth Amendment, uh, of the Constitution, uh, it protects, uh, everyone in the United States from cruel and unusual punishment. Um, and under the Eighth Amendment is where an inmate, uh, would bring what's called a conditions of confinement lawsuit that can speak to the ratio of toilets to, to inmates. It could be, uh, a filthy facility. It could be, uh, a facility in disrepair, uh, any of those things. And, uh, if, if you do a little bit of research of, of those types of lawsuits, when those are won by the inmates, the award is, uh, typically in the tens of millions of dollars. Our facility was not designed with, with technology in mind, uh, and I'll speak more to that later. We have four medical beds for the entire facility. That encompasses mental health and just your, uh, everyday, uh, medical issues. Uh, so four medical beds for a three-hundred-person facility. And, uh, the clinic itself is the size of a, a mop closet. Very difficult for the nurses and the doctors to do work in there. Uh, when the facility was built, there was no consider- consideration regarding transgender issues. It wasn't something that was thought about back then, uh, but it's something that, that we're forced to think about now. My duty as a jail administrator is to protect the inmates that are in my care. That's from each other, um, from everybody, uh, sometimes from themselves. The only way that I can house transgender inmates currently is to put them in solitary confinement, which is also something that the Supreme Court has looked at as, as not a good thing. Uh, the law requires that if I, if I separate somebody from everybody else, uh, for a, for an administrative reason, I have to be able to provide them with all the amenities that the regular inmates would have. And that's currently impossible for us to do. We have two special observation cells. Uh, these are padded rooms, uh, where suicidal inmates are housed. Uh, and in some cases, uh, folks that are in some kind of mental health crisis. Um, again, for a facility that holds three hundred inmates, uh, two special observation cells i- is not even close to being enough. We also have less than sixty square feet of unencumbered space for inmate. Uh, the sixty-foot number comes from the Georgia jail standards and from the federal government. We're well below that. I'd estimate that we're below half that. A new facility, um, from the Georgia Sheriff's Association survey, uh, calls for six hundred and sixty-five total beds, expandable over twenty years to thirteen hundred. Uh, we're realistically looking for about five hundred to five hundred and fifty with space prepared, uh, for a hundred to a hundred and fifty more. Uh, this would be like in a house, an unfinished bonus room. Uh, the structure would be there, uh, and would be cost-effective to, uh, update later on as the needs arise. The new facility, uh, the recommendation is no more than four beds per cell. For anybody, uh, the vast majority of the facility should be two beds, uh, per cell. Uh, that's a safety issue. And something that wasn't thought about when our current facility was built. Uh, the new facility would obviously comply with Georgia jail standards, PREA standards, uh, PREA is the Prison Rape Elimination Act. And it would be designed with rehabilitation and education in mind. The new facility would also be designed for optimal efficiency for inmate movements. Uh, this is, uh, reduces the burden on staff. Uh, it allows us to operate more efficiently uh, with less staff per inmate, uh, than would otherwise be the case. Uh, it would build, it would be built with future growth in mind. And it would also consolidate the operations of the sheriff's office to one location. Uh, the sheriff would obviously maintain an office at the courthouse, uh, as he's required to do. Uh, but everything else, we're currently, uh, spending a lot of money every month on rent in the building on one ninety-six for our professional standards bureau. Uh, we would be able to eliminate that with the new building. It would have adequate support services, kitchen, laundry, medical. And we have a courtroom on site to reduce inmate transportation to and from the courthouse. Obviously, we'll also have the latest technology. Uh, so when we talk about the design of a new facility, um, it's thoughtfully designed and it can be aesthetically pleasing and, and functional. I know that, uh, nobody wants an ugly, uh, industrial-type building in their backyard or a long airport road. Uh, we just heard some of that. Jails don't have to look like jails anymore. The properly designed building would improve efficiency, reduce liability, reduce recidivism, and keep Liberty County out of federal court for Eighth Amendment conditions of confinement claims. Again, those claims are typically paid out in the tens of millions. Along with duty to protect. Uh, if I put a, uh, a minor misdemeanor, uh, somebody who's in there for driving on a suspended driver's license, for instance, I put them in the cell, in the same dorm as a known violent inmate, and that violent inmate assaults someone, uh, the Liberty County Jail and in, by extension, the Liberty County Board of Commissioners would be directly responsible for that. Uh, we have the responsibility to keep our inmates safe, uh, by properly classifying them. Uh, the Georgia Sheriff's Association study, uh, spells out that we're currently not able to do that effectively. And as the chief alluded to, we are the largest mental health facility in Liberty County by a lot. At any given time, I would estimate that we probably have twenty-five to thirty inmates that are critically mentally ill and currently in crisis. And I'd say that up to sixty percent of our population suffers from some sort of mental illness. We don't just house inmates. Uh, that was how it was done in the past. We want to give them tools to succeed, so that hopefully they don't come through our doors again. This is what a, a, a modern facility can look like. This is another example. And just some comparisons of what we're currently dealing with. It's hard to see because it's dark, but that's the, the actual situation. This is a, a control point, uh, in Tower one, the oldest part of our jail. Uh, there's a, uh, one of our staff is sitting there, um, that is manned twenty-four seven. It's dark and gloomy. It's in, in, in bad shape. Wires are everywhere. Um, a new facility would look a little more something like what you see on the right. Our current kitchen on the left, this is, uh, the space where, uh, seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty meals a day are prepared for the inmates. As opposed to what it looks like in a new, modern facility. On the left, you see our current IT situation at the Liberty County Jail. Every time somebody comes, uh, for an IT issue of any kind, and, and they see that room, uh, they're blown away. But this is what we're currently dealing with. There are wires in there that haven't been moved since when that jail was constructed. On the right side, you see clean, accessible plumbing chases, big enough, uh, to drive a man lift through if you need to. Uh, makes our maintenance, uh, much more efficient, uh, a- and easier on our staff. Again, I don't think that anybody would think that this is acceptable, that this is a way to run an IT business, uh, for a multimillion-dollar facility. This is, uh, the break room for our booking staff. It's also the storage room for our current inmate files. So as you can see in this picture, um, you can sit on the toilet and heat something up in the microwave all at the same time. Our booking staff are there. Uh, they're, they work twelve-hour shifts. And when they're busy, uh, this is where they have to use the facilities. Um, there's, there's nowhere else in that area, in that immediate area where they can go. The only time they can go somewhere else is, uh, when it's not busy in booking, and that doesn't occur often. The way they secure the door here is with a little hasp and just hope that somebody doesn't push it harder enough, hard enough to open. This is the current layout of the Liberty County Jail. This is the oldest part, Tower one. This is our admin section. This is part of the expansion and our maintenance section, and then this is Tower two. Uh, I would just like to point out that the majority, our central control point is here in this area. If there's an issue that occurs in Tower two, uh, where an officer is in danger or an inmate is having a, a, a medical emergency, at any given time, there's gonna be one or two, uh, jailers in this area. But if they need help, help is coming from here, from here, and from here down this long hallway. For those of you that have been to the jail, um, when you open the door and you look down that hallway, it's intimidating. Uh, I don't care, uh, if you're in really good shape, when you get to the end, if you're running full speed, you're gonna be tired. And then I question how much help you're really gonna be to those officers and those inmates that need assistance. This is what a modern facility could look like. It's, it's very compressed, uh, on the footprint, uh, which makes movements inside much more efficient, uh, much more economical and, and safer for everyone involved. This is a, a, a modern cell block. The inside of a, uh, steel cell. From a safety standpoint, this is much safer than anything that we currently have. And the dangers of a poor, poorly designed jail, I'm not gonna read this whole thing, but I'll tell you this. Uh, in September, we had an inmate commit suicide at the Liberty County Jail. Um, he was a federal inmate, um, so the, the, any in custody death, the Georgia Bureau of Investigation, uh, takes. So the the any in custody death, the Georgia Bureau of Investigation takes over. And then because he was a federal inmate, the DOJ and the US Marshal Service descended upon us. And thankfully, nothing was done wrong on our end. But after the fact, they asked us to find our our points of failure and recommend fixes. What I discovered is that this inmate was able to tie a towel around the bunk bracket on top and fascinate in such a way that he was able to sit down and asphyxiate himself. What I found out after this, something that I didn't know at the time, was that this has happened at the Liberty County Jail once before. I think it was about ten years ago. And I bring that up because the the courts use the term deliberately indifferent when they talk about conditions of confinement and keeping their inmates safe. I have a duty to protect them, like I mentioned. The reason this inmate was was able to take his own life was directly because of the way the Liberty County Jail is constructed. And now we know that. And I'm afraid that it it has to be fixed. And with an with an aging facility, with the facility that we currently have, our maintenance guys got us a preliminary estimate, and it was north of a hundred thousand dollars, and it's still just a Band-Aid. So the need is there. This isn't a matter of the Liberty County Sheriff's Office wanting a new jail. We have to have one. And the cost to house inmates elsewhere, if we housed our current population out to other jails, if that was even possible, the cost would be around twelve thousand dollars a day. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Michael Johnston.
Thank you for listening to that part of it. But what the whole purpose was to let everyone know, and I know it's been a long day, but it was to let everyone know the sure need for the jail. The next thing we found that's important, it's going to cost a lot of money to build this jail. The new thing is you have to have the right management program when you're talking that kind of money. You don't want your best friend or your neighbor trying to manage that kind of kind of project with that kind of money. So there are there are programs, such as CMC program, to manage it, to make sure the county get their everything they want at for in the best bang for their buck. And so he will, Mr. Oakusen himself, will explain to you the difference and why you really need this when you start talking about spending this kind of money. I appreciate it.
Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Mosley. Thank you for allowing us to come and talk to you guys about your new jail, who Garmong is, and the CMC process. I've been working with the Sheriff's Office for about two years almost now, coming down from Indiana. I live in Indiana. Put the house on the market today, actually, moving my whole family down here to help counties like you to build new facilities. So I'd like to hand it over to my President Paul Oakusen with Garmong Construction. So thank you.
Sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Loveit, members of the board. Appreciate your time this evening. I know it's been a long meeting. If you'll just indulge me for a few minutes. This isn't lengthy, but I think it's important to kind of discuss how you begin the process of procuring professionals to help you bring such a facility online if you so choose to do so, which I think you saw a pretty compelling argument from the sheriff's offices to the need. I will tell you, it's just a quick personal point of privilege, since I've got the microphone. I've I've been in a lot of county facilities across the country, and if there was a need for a new a new jail, you certainly fit that criteria, in my opinion. Talking about delivery methods is probably the most exciting thing you'll discuss tonight. Probably not. But I think it is important to consider how do you align the delivery methods with the needs of the county? We've built over twenty-five county jails, facilities similar to the one that you might undertake since two thousand and fifteen. Two of our key partners are headquartered here in Georgia. Chief Al referred to Steel Cells. Steel Cell North America is headquartered here in Georgia, has its Titan Steel Door. And, you know, part of the reason we find ourselves expanding into the state of Georgia is due to some of those partnerships. Just a quick review of the agenda. We'll just, I'll speed this along. But what I have come to understand is that traditionally, you all have tended to deliver public works projects through a methodology called design-build. CMC, also called that in Indiana, construction manager as constructor, also known as CM at Risk, has most recently been put on statutes, both in Georgia and Indiana, respectively, around two thousand and seventeen. Newer delivery method, delivery method, and one that may not be yet all too familiar to you. You've seen that. Just a little bit about our company. We are a fourth generation, family-run business founded just over a hundred years ago. Our annual volume today is actually closer to five hundred million. We have our five offices, four in Indiana and our first here in Georgia, looking to actually expand a sixth office in in this particular area. As I said, the number of counties, the number of beds, this is slightly dated material. All those counties in blue are ones that have been done since two thousand and fifteen by us. All but maybe two of those have been done through the construction manager as construction methodology. We have only ninety-two counties in Indiana, quite a bit less than you have here in Georgia. So we'll just quickly jump into some of these processes. And and we're agnostic. We've done, in fact, at one point, maybe twenty years ago, we were the state of Indiana's largest design builder. Today, we do very little design-build work because of the statutory advancements along construction management. So design-build, as as you would traditionally know it here in Georgia, you, the owner, would hire a design-build team through an RFP process. The design-build team would be fully responsible to the owner for the delivery of the project. Typically, at some point, as early as possible in the process, a GMP is established. Are you all familiar with that? Alphabet soup, GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price. And then you have communication flow. You can see sort of a representative org chart up there. Some of the advantages. Design-build, you have a single contract, right? Sort of the old one throat to choke aspect, as they used to say. GMP can be established early. The project schedule at that time can be fast tracked. I think design-build for public statute became online here in Georgia around two thousand and seven, same time in Indiana. Some of the perceived or or real disadvantages that we've come to appreciate along the way is this one in particular. So you're going to accept the price for your building based on a very minimal amount of design criteria, typically no more than thirty percent. That means seventy percent of the building is going to continue to be designed as you're under construction, but you've already sort of agreed to a budget. The criteria for that thirty percent, if you consider all those pictures that Major Crumnow showed you of the jail, there's a lot to consider in that seventy percent that's yet to be designed. Owner defers control of design process to design-build team. In design-build, the architect or the designer reports through the construction or design-build team. Where I think that's particularly challenging, and and what I think some of your peers in Indiana would tell you is you, as the owner, need to control that design process. When you allow the construction company with the designer contracted under them to control that, you end up finding yourself at the end of a project with things getting a little bit cheaper, a little bit cheaper, a little bit cheaper, because you've eaten up so much money early on in the process. And now you may not be getting the design that you intend or want. Public procurement for design-build is well established, and and you you must follow it, which means you don't have the luxury of picking a trusted partner you might want unless they can game the scoring system so they come out ahead. Let's compare that to CMC. In this model, you, the owner, would retain contractual ownership of the design, the architect. That's important, again, because you want to build the building that you want. One that the sheriff's office knows how to operate, one that fits the needs of the county. I heard a lot of discussion about maybe adding some shell space onto that for future expansion. All of those aspects are things that you, as an owner, should and would probably like to control. CM is a selection-based process. So as opposed to following some scoring criteria based on limited design, in this procurement process, you have quite a bit of latitude on who you select to be your partner in this. And in some cases, often, we've been hired as the construction manager first and then aided the county in their selection of the design team, but working independently with you, the owner. The pre-construction process, so deliver the project, we work together. That's where the real value is. We're there at the outset of the design process. We're able to map pricing through the through the subcontractor markets. And in essence, give you a pretty reasonable expectation about what the expenditure, the budget's going to need to be. You still competitively bid all the subcontracts out, so you get the most competitive pricing available in the marketplace. You can see the advantages up here on the screen. I won't read all of them. But again, you have a lot of latitude as to who you select, making sure you have the right partner. I spent six years in public service myself and was in charge of procurement, and I always tried to accomplish the same goal. Pick a known partner to build a known thing for a known cost. Design team is separate from us, would be a potential disadvantage to talk fairly about it. Unused contingency money, which is contractually owned by the construction manager, is returned to you, the county, after the project is complete. The reason I cite that as a disadvantage is you obviously want to push as much money into the bricks and sticks as possible. I will tell you on an average project that we build, we only hold about three to four percent of contingency in the total construction dollars, which means about ninety-seven percent of your taxpayer funds are going into the building itself. We still have to work with the lowest bidder sometimes, and we all know that can be a challenge. The comment I just alluded to, though, under construction manager as constructor, you can get a known partner, get a known price, and you get a known design. Hendricks County was the picture that Mr. Crumnow shared with you. We've built jails that look similar to that. We're now in our third county jail in Indiana. It's going to be built that same way. It's a very efficient design, very well constructed. With that, I think I've been as efficient as I can be, but I'd certainly open the floor to any questions that you all might have.
Any questions?
How many companies do you think design jails in southeast? In Georgia, Florida, Alabama, Tennessee? How many companies build them?
Well, so you said design initially. Do you mean build, sir?
Yeah.
So there are a handful of companies, some here that are home to Georgia. I would tell you that, and 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 I think what what the sheriff's office has witnessed firsthand is that the prefabricated modular steel cell is the way to go for a lot of reasons. Lightweight, build, requires less foundation structure to support it. It is basically a hermetically sealed cell with a polyurea coating in it. There are no seams or joints in which an inmate can puncture or, you know, there's no Shawshank Redemption opportunity in a in a steel cell. The efficiency in design and the cost. If you consider that to be the premise of your question, we are the largest prefabricated modular jail builder in the country. No one has built more jails using that product with your Georgia housed or headquartered Steel Cell North America than us by far. So to to truly answer your question, yes, there are companies that build jails. But there are not companies that build jails in a modern way that would be most efficient and effective and secure for Liberty County. Anything else?
What kind of price are we talking about?
That depends. Not an inexpensive endeavor, I think, by any sort of assessment. The design, what you ultimately design, as you know, will drive a lot of that cost. We have counties that that move their dispatch into their jail, that have their morgue attached to the jail. I mean, so it really depends and how much infrastructure you're going to keep. We stopped pricing things on a per-bed basis years ago because the market changed, and that was no longer an adequate way to 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 sort of surmise that. But really, what we project now is just like traditional construction on a square foot basis. And I'd be happy to do some comparisons for you, but it it really just depends on what you design and how many beds. The bigger the facility, it's kind of like a parking structure. The bigger the facility, the more efficient the construction costs get, right? Pouring small amounts of concrete and small amounts of steel is very expensive per square foot. The larger you get, the economies of scale balance out.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question. I can't remember what slide it was. It was a slide that talked about the number of current beds to
Yeah, that was
Future.
Is that able to be pulled back up?
Oh, yeah. Don't worry about it. I forgot. Mics, baby. Okay, so I know it said currently we have two hundred and seventy-six beds. And we could push it up to three oh five if we put some mats on the floor. Those words out of your mouth.
Yes, sir.
Right. And there we go. And then it was saying, future, I think the next slide was we should be, there we go. It said from the Georgia Association, right?
Yes, sir.
How did they come up with the future growth numbers?
So they did a, the the study they did for us, the needs assessment, it was a a process that took several months. They took our current inmate population. They ran the criminal history on each and every inmate. They picked a snapshot in the past where our population was high. They ran the criminal histories on those inmates. They checked the population projections for Liberty County and for the state of Georgia. I don't know how the math worked, but but those are all factors that played into it. I have the the needs assessment from the Sheriff's Association that I can forward to any of you.
Please.
It goes in great detail.
Right, right, right. Because I'm just, again, you know, I've I've spoke with you, I spoke with the sheriff, I spoke with the chief, I spoke with all you all. So what I'm about to say, I mean, there's there's no secret. You know, I I I understand the need, you know. I understand the need from the protection of of our inmates. I understand the protection of you all. But also, you know, I'd be remiss if I don't sit up here and say the same thing I've been sitting up here saying for thirteen years about education and economic development. If we focus on that as well, and I'm, I mean, we could do both. We could do both. But there's places that have higher education, higher economic opportunities, aren't looking to to build new jails because opportunities are there. Now, what what I do like about this particular project, and and the chief said it, we we talked about recidivism. And and that's very important to to have something for them. Because just putting them in in jail, letting them sit there. And, I mean, they're getting educated in there. I guarantee you that. But it's not the type of education that's going to get them to come back out here and be, you know, great citizens back into the workforce. But they are being educated. They're in there being educated right now. But I I do like the point that you all were saying that they they have some some rooms where they could be educated with GEDs, maybe some, I know with Sheriff and I, we talked about this years ago, even some type of working with like Savannah Tech, with like, you know, some trades and something like that. I I love it.
One hundred percent.
Right.
I've reached out to Savannah Tech. I've reached out to technical colleges in the area, and the answer is not possible with our current facility.
Right, because you don't have
We don't have a classroom. We don't have anywhere to put put people to learn.
Right.
And and that is something that we would absolutely insist on in a new facility.
Right.
If I might, too, along those lines, the picture that you showed about the layout of the facility, the greater efficiency, the flow, the movement of inmates through the facility allows for, one, a more efficient footprint, for for greater use of programming space. The flow of inmates into that programming space is much more efficient. space, the flow of inmates into that programming space is much more efficient. I think if you were to call any one of the counties that have built a modern jail, they'll tell you that that has greatly improved with these types of facilities, just because of the flow and the access and the ability, and the programming space is nicer, too.
Right. Matter of fact, can you go back two more slides to the break room?
As it sits today, we can leave here right now and go check it out, it looks exactly like this.
I know, I mean, I mean, there's, that's, I don't even have anything to say about that. That's just, I mean, that's, that's nothing to be Liberty County proud about, honestly. But again, like I said, I just want us, as a commission, as a community, to work on both, and I think we also need to bring the Board of Education in on this, because I saw something the other day, they were saying, out of eleven thousand students that are currently in our system, sixty percent are impoverished. That's not a Board of Education issue, that's not a county commission issue, that's a Liberty County issue. And once we come to realize that it's an issue together in one room, and come up with some solutions, this is what we're gonna have to do. We're gonna have the same conversation ten years later, fifteen years later, talking about, we need more jail space.
Mr. Commissioner, I agree a hundred percent, and to that point, currently when we have students in the school system that get arrested, it does happen, sometimes those teachers come to the jail, the Board of Education brings teachers to the jail to instruct those students to give them some face time with them. I'm sure that if you speak to any of the ones that have been involved in that, they will tell you that the way, that our current setup is not conducive to any kind of educational program or assistance at all.
Right. But again, I wouldn't be who I am if I wouldn't say, if we can invest in jail, we can invest in keeping them out of jail. We need more family entertainment, we need more, more things for these kids to do idle hands. There's too many idle hands around here, but I appreciate the presentation.
Chairman, I have a question concerning if, and I know you couldn't give us a price earlier, but you gave us a footprint of whatever you showed up there, possibly the new facility, but I was, how many more employees would that involve? Because we need to look at that as a budgeted item also, not just the price of a jail.
Yes, ma'am, that's obviously a continuing cost.
Right.
So, it's difficult for me to give you any kind of estimate right now. When I first went into...
So, you're looking at doubling, I believe, going back to that first slide. So, it would almost double the budget for the jail operation currently?
So, that was my thought.
Possibly.
That was my thought going into this as well. When I first started down this road, I said, on several occasions, I told anybody that would listen, that I believed that if we doubled our capacity, we would have to more than double our staff. What I've learned over the last two years is that that's not the case. With a facility that's more efficient, a more compact footprint, yes, we're still gonna need more staff, absolutely, but it's not gonna be anywhere near double. To get exact numbers, we would have to settle on a design and then do a staff survey, a staff study, but I would estimate that it would be much less than double what our current staff is. It would be more, yes, but not double.
And I know you mentioned earlier, too, that about sixty percent were mentally, suffer mental health issues, you know, and we know mental health is a concern in this community. But I was looking at, you know, there was talk of a mental health facility, and I didn't know if that would take some of the burden off of the jail if we had, you know, a mental facility.
I don't believe so.
To bed those, if not, they're in and out at the jail.
Yes, ma'am.
And that will be a continual problem.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I don't know that you could educate them to get them back on the street. I don't know you might could.
Any new, any new design that we've looked at would include a significant increase in the number, like I said, we have four currently, it would include a significant increase in the number of medical beds, which would then allow us to provide some mental health services. We can never take the place of a mental health institution.
Right, because it's a continual, you know...
Right, but what we're dealing with currently is that you have folks that are mentally ill in our community, that because of their mental illness, commit some minor crimes, some status crime, disorderly conduct, something very, very trivial. They get dropped off at the hospital, they become irate and combative at the hospital, so the hospital staff doesn't want to deal with them anymore, they call the Heinzville Police Department, Heinzville Police Department arrests them for disorderly conduct, whatever the case is, they bring them to Liberty County Jail. And I will tell you that somebody who's in mental crisis, when they get to the Liberty County Jail, that crisis does not subside. It increases. When they're locked away in a room by themselves, in unfamiliar surroundings, they don't get any better, they get worse.
One more question, Ms. Chairman, I have right now, how about the current jail? What would happen to that if we should?
The vast majority of the current jail would be demolished.
Okay.
There are some...
The pods or whatever that...
Yes, ma'am, the housing pods would be torn down, there's no, in my opinion, and to some of the folks that are much smarter than I am that I've talked to, it's not cost effective to try to rehabilitate those.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so either.
Tower one specifically, the footprint is too small, there's nothing that could be effectively done with that. We've gotten estimates, kind of ballpark numbers of renovating Tower one, and it was around fourteen, fifteen million dollars, and we wouldn't really gain anything.
All right, let's...
Chairman, if I might, Madam Commissioner, if I could expand upon the question about staffing, the more modern design, we call it podular, right? So, you see all these wedges, and I'm trying to find the picture, that's what's inside those wedges, right?
You didn't bring that slide, it don't look like, that you showed us at the planning commission with the stacks?
There was a video, yes.
There's a video of the stacking?
Yes, ma'am, there was a video.
That was important.
Those are the steel cells. I was really trying, I was really trying to be mindful of your time.
Well, yeah, we're gonna...
We appreciate that.
But anyway, thank you.
But the control tower room that he showed you earlier is right here, right? You have a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree unblocked visual access with a control panel, you can unlock and lock any of those cells from right there. So, the efficiency of his staff to run the detained portion of the jail increases immensely. To his point, may not be a one-for-one, but it's certainly much more efficient than the layout that you have today. That helps visually.
Ms. Chairman, that sounds...
Can I add a couple of things to Mr. Frazier's? I totally agree with you, we've had this conversation, we have a community problem that, and the sheriff and I, and all the members of our sheriff's department really work hard in the community, that's why we're constantly there, working with the youth, doing everything we can to get them before they end up out here. But just our society currently won't allow us to stop building, but if we, since we have to have it, we need to have somewhere safe, something that we don't end up in major lawsuits. If you notice, as the sheriff's been in office, our lawsuit claims have even gone down, much less, the filings, much less than anyone collecting, but because of, I call it good leadership, good oversight, and working with what we got, and it's tough, but at the same time, we need something that's gonna be safe for everybody and that will save the county for years to come. The podular system, one thing, it's set up like the plumbing system, you can't flood the cells, that stops a lot of bad behavior by the inmates, where they can go out there and now flood, flood a cell or whatever, stop up, and you're spending money like crazy to repair it. If a valve go bad, you don't even have to disturb the detainees in the jail, you go down this pathway behind the cell, we can recall steel cells or the plumbing company send me part them or so and so, you fix it in a matter of a couple of minutes, and, but there's no disruption to the operation of the jail. So, it's very efficient, and it's, it's, the ways of doing business is much, we call it, we're trying to defeat all, every way that destruction of our builders can take place.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Go back to that diagram with the, I guess it's got cells in it. Now, where are the inmates housed in that gray part?
Yes, sir.
And below that, that's inmates would be housed down there as well?
I think this is designed to illustrate future expansion space.
Okay. And one of the, I think the gentleman back in the back, he said that he's been here, I guess, talking with the sheriff and the sheriff's department for two years, and is this diagram the one that y'all discussed during this two-year period?
It's one of many, many that we discussed.
Well, okay, well, this one here, with all the bells and whistles that was discussed tonight, and since no one hadn't mentioned cost, to get one of those with all the bells and whistles that's been discussed, what would the estimate of cost be for something like that?
I would be glad to say, I'm not afraid to say, approximately five years ago, I think, to build that jail, close to sixty million, and it's much more, probably more, was of eighty to a hundred million.
One-twenty-five.
And that's...
One-twenty-five.
This particular jail right here, we are breaking ground on today, fully bid out was ninety-five million dollars.
Well, see, also, if you look at those numbers where the Sheriff's Association says six-hundred-and-fifty beds, that's the first thing I mentioned to the commissioner, I don't think we need to go that high, but I think more of five-fifty to double our bed count, but also be available for future growth, all you gotta do is add a pod.
So, that one right there is around a hundred thousand, that one right there?
A hundred million, approximately. Somewhere in that area, it could be higher or lower, but...
That just bid this summer.
Ninety-five.
But then again, that's why...
And how many beds is that?
Five-eighty-five.
Five-eighty-five?
Yes, sir.
And how many you said we need, chief?
I said five-fifty would be sufficient at this point.
Efficient for...
For growth, some growth, but like down here.
Twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-five, or...
It's coming out in years, just continue growth, as you see around here, we constantly growing each year, we're bringing in more and more citizens, with growth comes crime, unfortunately, and that's why the jail association came with such a high number, but I just said, we could have this part down here for the, for future growth, but put the five-fifty and just double what we currently...
The future growth is down by the white part, okay, and what's all this other stuff to the left of that?
The offices where your investigators would be, your patrol, all your different administrative aspect of it, but also you have kitchen facilities and...
So, the gray areas here, Mr. Commissioner, the housing areas for the inmates, what the chief is alluding to here, this is like the unfinished bonus room that I talked about, that like you would have in your house, for instance, the studs, all the, all the main things are already there. If there, if there came a time where we said that the five-fifty that we currently have, or five-hundred that we currently have, isn't enough anymore, it would be a matter of opening the side of this building with, it would have a large, like a roll-up door, and then roll it in steel cells, the area would be already prepped for plumbing and all those things.
Okay, so for future use or something like that?
Right. You won't have to build no more buildings or whatever, the future growth is within.
And just on this particular plan, the green area here is booking, this is medical on this side here, this is the kitchen area, this is laundry, this is some storage space here for inmate property, the housing areas, this is the trust, I'm sorry, the medical area, there's a trustee dorm here, and then alongside these corridors are multipurpose rooms, teleconferencing rooms, and then when you move to the side here, this is the administration side of the building, classrooms, offices for admin staff, evidence room, and all those things to make the sheriff's office run.
Well, and just changing subjects a little bit, the inmates with the, with the mental issues, okay, you know, say they're down at the, at the hospital and they, you know, they get arrested for disorderly conduct or something, and we discovered they got mental issues, they'll only be in jail until they serve the time for what they were arrested for, we're not trying to deal with their mental issues, it's not, it's not a mental hospital inside the jail.
But what happens is that they go to court and the judge gives a mental evaluation, and that takes twelve months minimum.
So, you could have one of them in the jail for twelve months?
It's, it is possible that somebody on a misdemeanor charge could spend twelve months in our jail just to be found, just to be determined if he's mentally competent to stand trial or not.
I guess it does kind of serve as a...
We are the largest mental institution in Liberty County, yes, sir, and will continue to be for the foreseeable future.
And part of our medical program, that is getting mental health counselors and all into the facility, and I think they do it more tele...
It's all telehealth right now.
At this point.
Do y'all hold them like the hospital does for places, waiting on placement, too?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
The waiting time to get a bed at Georgia Regional is nine months or more.
And believe me, we go in there every morning, the major and the captain, trying to figure out with the judges, who can we get out of the jail? We don't want to have to keep people out there, we really don't, because it costs them meals, you name it, but it's just the liability of them being there. The medical goes up, all of those things are affected, you know, by them being out there, but...
And we're talking about reducing recidivism, but one that's in there for the, for mental, medical, I mean, a mental situation, what kind of treatment does the jail provide? I mean...
That's what I was saying.
Have someone come in? Yes, sir. As part of our medical contract.
But is...
But also we have the ten thirteen through the probate court, so we have to deal with those, transporting the ten thirteens, a lot of time have to end up out here. Let me tell you, we have to, it's amazing that a lot of times, we'll get calls by the family, but we end up having to deal with, because they can't, and then they end up committing a crime to end up out there, but...
And what happens more, more often than not with the, with the mentally ill that come to our facility for a minor crime, is they end up accumulating charges while they're there, they assault the staff, they destroy property, and so what happens, what starts off as a disorderly conduct citation, ends up, in some cases, as a felony charge.
How many inmates have you got from other counties right now?
I know we have Bryan County.
Well, we've got, I want to say it's around thirty-eight for Bryan County currently, and then we house for the US Marshal Service as well.
That's the only county, other counties?
Yes, sir, I think we have one from McIntosh, but that's, that's the only other...
I know they have, opened up the one at Ludwigs.
They go to Jeso, don't they?
Long County Sheriff's Office historically has not housed inmates with Liberty County.
Do we now?
They don't house inmates with us.
But also I think it should be known, because I think there's a misnomer out that we hold these other county inmates for free, it doesn't happen, there is a cost that's covered by them, same way if we have to send ours out, because some that commit crimes here for their safety, we have to send them outside the county, because there's not proper holding facilities to keep them here, to keep someone in there from maybe having a family member locally harming them, so...
And my last question, Ms. Chairman, so that bed count that we're looking at, is that, in this Liberty County Jail, that bed count is considering housing people from other counties?
Absolutely.
Federal prisoners, Bryan County, and whoever else that might need some help?
Absolutely, because if you get to a point where it's all ours, guess what, we'll have to say no to them, but, but in that situation, it will help to bring, you know, by, I'm sure as many beds as we could offer, the federal system will send their people, and it pays, it's a not-for-profit business, but it costs for them to stay here, but it offsets a lot of the cost that the county itself would...
You wouldn't put one of theirs out to put one of ours in, though, would you? I'm just joking.
Well, we look at the seriousness, we may call them, say you need to come get one, you know, but, you know, call it seriousness, so...
Thank you, that's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just one other thought, if I might, just as you think about this investment, and you then ponder expansion, and I believe, Commissioner, you said you saw the video of stacking the cells?
We all did.
The beauty of this is the great efficiency by which you can then populate this open space. We literally just cut a hole in the wall, we bring in cells, use a forklift, drop them in place, and it's literally like plug-and-play. So, when you think about the efficiency of what you're looking at here, and then you think about, well, gee, what if we have to expand, the cost of expansion is greatly reduced, and it's very efficient, and it's very fast, so I just thought that would be beneficial for you to understand. Chairman.
Ms. Chairman, I appreciate everybody's being here tonight, and I learned a lot about everything that we've talked about. I have an engagement that I need to be at in twenty minutes. See y'all.
We're right behind you. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Mosley and Chief.
Yes, sir.
Sasha, so where do we where do we go from here?
My recommendation, Mr. Chair, would be to reconvene the jail committee and start formulating the plans and processes from that committee.
Okay.
Who's on the jail committee?
I was.
Chairman and Commissioner Stevens, and I think it's one of our
Somebody else.
I believe it was Commissioner
Oh, it was Connie. It was Commissioner Thrift.
It don't matter. Can we, can we put together a family entertainment center committee? Please. Do I have a motion even second?
Commissioner, Commissioner Frazier, let's stay on, come on now, let's stay on track.
I mean, we've been here for three hours.
Yeah. I knew I was.
Commissioner Stevens was. I want to say the Commissioner Frazier was as well.
Yeah, but it's
But we never had a true formal meeting about, you know
No, we didn't get, no.
Never did, because we tried to put one together so we can go look at some jails and that type thing. But that's where we got to go in and look, and one thing I would say, there's no county funds being spent with us looking at this, because we're reviewing someone else's plans and tried to plug in what would work for us compared to what would work for this agency. But at the same time, we are keeping cost in mind, because it matters. And that's why we, first thing we said, we can help, but I think six hundred and fifty at this time will be too many. And, but also make sure it can grow without having to come back and say we need thirty million later, just to build another pod or whatever. Whatever the cost may be at that time.
All right. We'll put it back together. Well, you know, we did the tour, you had someone to come look at the jail, then we saw the video that Commissioner Thrift just referenced. And you offered, if the field trip, we said, well, let's bring it back
Right.
to the commission, because that's kind of where we are. So we just need to create a timeline and progress from that.
The committee can kind of decide the process. Of course, they'll recommend the CMC process.
Yeah, we talked about that.
That can be discussed and brought back to the board in terms of how
Because Joy was involved in all that, yeah, so we got to pick up and, okay, all right. We'll be in touch, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chairman, could we go do his report tomorrow?
In the morning?
Well, let's do the new, the new water management contract. Let's do that then.
I knew that. Yes, sir. He's right. I knew that.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the companion piece that went with the water rates is Commissioner Walden was asking about who managed it, and that is a contract that y'all have with Woodrow Sapp. We haven't, they hadn't had any increases. This contract takes into consideration new increases, and this is something I asked Joy to review before he left, and he did, and he said it's still within a good pricing amount. And so we would recommend that the board would approve this. This is a contract that Mr. Davis developed back in twenty fourteen, twenty twelve, twenty fourteen, twenty, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, somewhere right near. And I asked him to review it to any updates, and he texted me today saying that the contract is still good.
Still good?
Yes, sir.
As it was?
Contract with Sapp?
Yes, sir.
Woodrow Sapp.
Woodrow Sapp.
No changes, all right. Chair ten a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Y'all in favor? So, all right. All right. Chair ten a motion to adjourn?
Oh, move.
Second? We'll hear your mental state report tomorrow, sir.
Mr. Chair, just want to remind everybody to
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
Absolutely.
Be here, and we're gonna have fun with the budget.
And the firefighters' graduation tomorrow night.
Yes, sir. Firefighters' graduation tomorrow night at six thirty at the Performing Arts Center.